Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Toya Tucker, District Four. Charmaine Crabbe, District Five. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim, and District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
July 26th, city council meeting. We're delighted to have you join us as we conduct the city's business. We're going to begin though, as we always do, and that's by asking God's blessings on these proceedings. So I'm going to invite to the podium, John Mayberry. Mr. Mayberry, welcome, sir. Come to this one if you don't mind. Thank you for being here.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this afternoon. We thank you for our wonderful city council and our mayor. We thank you, Lord, for the many steps that you've allowed our city to take forward together in the days past. And we pray now for the greater things that you're going to lead us into in the days to come. We pray, Lord, that you keep on our minds, the one Columbus, that's the city that's for all of its citizens. And we pray, Lord, that you just govern the meeting and guide the minds and let your spirit reign. And let a spirit of love move in this place. We're asking Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag. Thank you. All right, members of council, we have the minutes made available from the July 12th meeting. Motion and a second to receive the minutes with no edits. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. We have a special guest in the audience today. And we're going to celebrate Jesse Stanley Day. If I could get Jesse and his... Brought his own cheering section, but we are numbered among those. Mr. Stanley, if you would, come up to the podium, bring your guests, if you like, whoever wants to join you. And I'm going to turn this over to Counselor Bruce Huff. Counselor Huff, if you'd hit your light, we'll get you. There you are, sir.
Good evening. Get your group together.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for coming. Let's do a moment of silence because we have a lot of people that share my thoughts and prayers to come up here, do this job. And let's just take a moment to pray in our silence for them that are not here.
Thank you.
Mr. Stanley. Welcome, sir. Welcome, 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 welcome. For those that don't know, I go back with Jesse Stanley and his family and brothers. We all grew up playing ball together on the streets of downtown Columbus and all over BTW, all out to the YMCA or all around town. And we just grew up being boys, enjoying life, getting to know one another. But in this situation, sometimes we have someone in our midst that has done a lot for the community in his own way. And a lot of people have no idea. So this is to show some love to you today for all of the effort that you put into it. And... All right, she said if you want to come, you... Oh, you've here, if you need to take a picture later, you can come up and shoot down. Okay, go ahead. Okay. Okay, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Jesse L. Stanley, son of James and Ori..." Is it Ori? Ori?
Right.
Okay. Okay, James and Ori Bill Stanley was the ninth of 11 children. He was baptized in 1969 at Fourth Street Baptist Church in Columbus, Georgia. And whereas Jesse L. Stanley attended William H. Spencer High School in Columbus, Georgia from 1972 to 1976, graduating on June 5th, 1976. And whereas Jesse L. Stanley joined the Columbus Umpire Association of Columbus, Georgia and the Georgia High School Association in 1981, and received a certificate of appreciation for 15 years of service with the Georgia High School Association. And whereas Jesse L. Stanley was inducted into the National Indicator Fraternity in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, in 1997. And whereas Jesse L. Stanley was honored by the Amateur Softball Association, USA Softball Magazine, front page edition, Executive Director's Annual Report, for his service during the Amateur Girls 18 and Under Softball Championship at South Commons in Columbus, Georgia. And whereas Jesse L. Stanley was awarded an appreciation certificate for 20 years of service on June 30th, 2001, by the Georgia High School Association. And whereas in 2014, Jesse L. Stanley was presented the Allen Fleellen Award from the Tri-County Officials Association in Fort Benning, Georgia, for his total dedication and commitment to excellence as the top official in numerous sports. And whereas Jesse L. Stanley received an award for 50 years of service at the Fourth Street Missionary Baptist Church, church's 120-year anniversary program on September 27th, 2020. Whereas Jesse L. Stanley was awarded an appreciation certificate for 40 years of services on June 30th, 2021, and then retired from officiating sports in August, 2021. Now therefore, Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, July 26th, 2022, as Jesse L. Stanley Day.
Well, I want to just thank the Lord for being here and I thank you all for coming. And I'm just grateful for being here. But on... Aug... October the 24th, 1920, I was out there on Brookstone Field running, at a football field. And I was about out of breath, shorting into breath. I was playing with in my heart, dizziness. And I guess I'm kind of my hard head, I kept running. And at the time, I had to stop, they stopped the game. And at that time, I was perceived for having a heart attack and didn't even know it. So I'm just thankful for being here today. And my mind is good, but my body's right now is a little, you know, hurting. So now, during the course of the testing MRI, I have a heart disease called amyloidosis. So they forgive me not wearing green to go today because I want everybody to know this shirt I wear, it supports my heart foundation. And I want everybody to know that it's a heart disease. That it's all right, I'm going to be, I'm good. I thank the Lord for being here and I'm going to be able to make it. So I just thank everyone for showing up today and I thank God for being here. And I thank you.
Mr. Stanley, if you would, come on up to the podium and I'll present you this proclamation. But first, let me tell you how much the city of Columbus appreciates all you've done through the years to pour into youngsters as they were learning the invaluable lessons that you can only learn sometimes on playing field. So thank you. Congratulations.
You remember I used to tell you, let you know?
I do.
You remember?
I got you.
You're in charge right now, but I was in charge there.
There you go, this is yours. Counselor Tucker?
Say, Mr. Jesse is fussing at me. And the message is to tell my grandma that she's supposed to be in his, in right here as a Spencerian and also an employee with Mr. Jesse. Mr. Jesse is special to me because every time I know I needed him, my grandma would say, "Ask Mr. Jesse. Mr. Jesse will help." So on behalf of Julia Kate Simmons, class of 1960, she is here in spirit with her grandbaby. Thank you, Mr. Jesse. I know, this ain't for your citizen.
All right, we've got a, one more comment, miss, from our city manager Isaiah Hughley. Let me...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate Jesse Stanley. We went to high school together, obviously. You just saw members of the greatest high school ever to grace Columbus, Georgia. Spencer High School. But congratulations to Mr. Stanley.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, while... I also want to, also want to welcome Counselor-elect Joanne Kogle to the chambers. Pleased to have you with us tonight, ma'am. I'm going to call up to the podium next for a short presentation, our river safety committee, for an update. At the last council meeting, we, we had occasion to recognize two successful rescues on our river and one that wasn't as successful. But it highlighted the fact that the river is a natural body of water that can be a very dangerous place. And for many years, we've had an organization that works year-round in trying to prepare to make the river, at least to acknowledge about the dangers of the river and to provide knowledge to the people that visit it. So Pam Fair is the chairperson and she's got a few other members that I'm sure she'll introduce as she goes along. Ms. Fair?
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. And I have with me today Chief Shores from Columbus Fire and EMS, Greg Costelli from the Department of Natural Resources, and Dan Gilbert from Whitewater Express, all of which you serve as a part of our committee. The committee was actually, the river safety committee was actually started in September 7th of 2017. And on that committee, as you can see, were the, were the initial members of the committee. We've had some changes, but the organizations themselves have remained constant. I'm not sure how to change the slides. Oh, okay, all right, thank you. So one of the first things that we did after we convened in 2017, we were looking over the data to see, you know, what was causing some of the drownings and issues. And so we decided to put together a community-based event that would educate our community about our beautiful river, but the fact that it does need to be respected and that there are some safety measures that need to take place. So we had our very first River Savvy Kids Event. And we were really proud of that event because the families, not just the child, but the guardian, the parents and guardians, went through a series of educational stations, about five of them hosted by some of the members here on our committee, our subject matter experts. And they learned things about the river and about safety. And then the final station, the child would be fitted for a life jacket. The initial funding for that first River Savvy Kids Event came from Kiwanis Club of Columbus. They funded the life jackets for us and we purchased those. That first year, we had 800 life jackets to distribute to our community. And we had huge turnout. And then the Kiwanis also came back the next year and funded for life jackets again. So in July 9th of 2019, the mayor convened a task force in regard to river safety. And then there was a subcommittee that came from that task force. That was an educational-based subcommittee. That was in July of 2019. And this subcommittee formed with that existing river safety committee. And we continued our work on river safety. So people will ask me, like, where does some of the funding come from? Our funding has been limited, but it has served some purposes for what we've been trying to do. As I mentioned, the Kiwanis Club was a funder. The Cito Foundation, I wrote a grant to get life jackets to fund our life jacket loner stations. Parks and Rec would provide some funding each year for the River Savvy Event. Academy Sports has stepped up in a huge way and provided us with the life jackets. In 2022, their biggest give yet was 500 life jackets, nearly $10,000 gift to the River Savvy Kids Events that we could have those life jackets to issue to our community and our loner stations. Uptown Columbus, Georgia Power. And of course, we wrote another grant with Save Kids Worldwide to help us fund some of the initiatives that we have ongoing. Operational funding continues to be a challenge. It does make us, it makes it difficult for us to strategically plan and weigh in advance, but we feel like we've had some considerable accomplishments thus far. So some of the accomplishments were, we have a multi-agency river safety committee. It's comprised of area open water subject matter experts. I certainly could not do it myself. I look to the experts to help us vet ideas and goals and objectives for our committee and for our river. We do have the annual river safety education event that happens each year and it has since 2018. We have a swift water rescue expert assessments that came from Charlie Wallbridge and who was the other names?
David Brown.
David Brown, sorry, I didn't have his name. So they actually provided us with some very expert assessments of our river and stated that we have one of the safest rivers that he's ever seen. So that's, that's an amazing thing as far as what we're doing, as far as trying to make the river safer. We also have DNR offers boating safety courses each year for those that want to be out on the river. Thank you. So we all, the Uptown Columbus developed a river safety video and whitewater courses every year. They have an annual swift water rescue courses. We have the numbers that are marked on each light pole on the river to identify locations. So if someone is in trouble, they can say, "I'm at light pole number," whatever it is, and that will kind of help identify where they are. We have an outdoor siren system. It is an excellent system and it works very well. So when the water is being released from Georgia Power, there is an alarm system that takes place at that time. Whitewater Express hosts three camps each year about river safety. They also have, make occasional citizen rescues. And a good point that Dan made was that, you know, there's constantly boats going down the river. So if someone does get in trouble, perhaps who shouldn't be there without a life jacket on or in the river, they have a much greater chance of having a hope of getting rescued because of so many rafts that go through. And that does happen from time to time. And then, of course, we have developed some educational signage and had those printed. Greg has a couple of examples of the signage, be happy to pass that around. They're heavy because they're made for outdoors. They're made to go underwater because we know our river will flood from time to time. So this sign is made to stand up on, to the outdoors and continue to... And this is just two of the examples. In your PowerPoint, you have a better listing of all of the signage. And so here is a picture of some of that signage that's actually hung along the riverwalk. We chose the blue heron because that's the bird that's frequent, that frequents our area. I mean, as you can see, we have three main messages. We have decided that we are going to add a new message for 2022 that talks about the siren, the fact that it exists and that when you hear it, you need to exit the water for your safety. In addition, we're going to implement Spanish messaging on the signs as well. That will have to be funded. We've actually been gracious that our Josh with the mayor's office has helped us get that, those messaging translated into Spanish so we can get those incorporated in the current signage. And of course, we do have some Spanish signage now, but we know that we would like to have some more. We also have seven loner stations in our area. That has expanded since this committee has been developed. We started off with just a couple and now we have seven in total. That's four on the Georgia side and three on the Alabama side. The loner stations are on flat water. So the, the, the life jackets are designed for lake-type action, not necessarily whitewater. But whitewater does require a very specialized life jacket in order to help you stay afloat in those types of rapids. And then we've actually conducted over the years several media campaigns. We've had billboards, we've had campaigns where we've received the life jackets from, from partners. And we've also had some campaigns talking about the upcoming educational community event that we are going to have in our community. So the committee has been heavily working since 2017. We're so proud of what we've done. We're tracking what we, you know, who, who is, who gets in the water? Who gets in trouble in the water? What do we need to do as far as trying to make an educational message that will help people when they approach our river? But we do also believe that it's personal responsibility as well. I mean, it's really important that if you're going to approach the river, you don't just open up your car door and end up at the river's edge. You have to make your way to the river's edge. So we want people to be empowered with information and knowledge, but also to have personal responsibility. If we get in that river, you need to have on a personal flotation device suitable for the type of water that you enter. So you got it? Does that have any additional comments?
Pam mentioned that we had two national experts come in over the years to evaluate what we're doing here in Columbus. And what struck me is both of them came, they came at a separate time. So they both said they haven't seen this happen anywhere else in the country where the community came together so, in such a great way to try to ensure safety on the river. And I'll tell you, from our standpoint, we're on the front line, obviously, out there on the water. From our standpoint, we have never, Whitewater Express has never felt like we're out there alone. We feel like this river safety committee is excellent. The city of Columbus has our backs whenever we've needed anything. And that's very important. I also think the river safety committee, you know, we don't come together just when there's an accident or just when there's great successes. We come together monthly. Pam sends out these, these things, hey, come in, you know, and we do it. And we come in and, and we discuss it. It is great to have the fire department, DNR, everybody at the table. Just often, nothing's happened in particular, but we can put our heads together and say, hey, what, what else could we do? We do this on a regular basis. And the other thing I would like to add is that there are great things. We're talking about tragedies and problems on the river. There's great things that happen every day on the river. Last Saturday, we had about 1,000 people from around this region of the country come, go down the river. And I thought it was great. I happened to, I was out there all day and we had one young, one boy who was out there who couldn't walk and he couldn't speak. He had probably the best day of his life. It was just wonderful experience for him. The river's a great equalizer. And we also, the same, on that same trip, there were three people that could not see. So there are people just have a great time out there every day and we want it to be safe.
I just want to say how much I appreciate Pam when she reached out to us to form the committee. She has spearheaded all of the mitigation efforts and we appreciate her reaching out to us and gaining the knowledge that the rescue teams have obtained through having to go in the water after our citizens and designing her mitigation strategies. And we really appreciate her effort.
We've got a few comments. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I hate to ask these questions in reference to statistics. Are we tracking the amount of incidents that occur? Whether it's, you know, someone fell in and you had to rescue or unfortunately someone passed away? Do we have that, you know, data?
We absolutely do. We track it on multiple levels and Chief Shores is the one that does that for us.
Right, so for some time, the department has been tracking all the demographic information on those individuals that we rescue, but the ones that also perish, to include some mapping models that we're working on right now to determine point last seen where we found that finding that person. So we also feel it's important to look at the associated negative behaviors. What was taking place on that scene that led to this incident? So we're looking at it on several different levels to make sure that we craft these mitigation strategies in a meaningful way. It's not simply enough just to put a message out. We want to understand, just like in fire safety, what's causing the problems and causing the disasters so that we can best create that program to have maximum effectiveness. So we, we have a tremendous amount of data that we utilize and we bring that to the committee and make sure they have that. So they're loaded with the information they need to design these strategies.
Is that something that can be shared, like with council?
Yeah, sure. So we can provide that information to you, certainly. It's a lot of Excel data, a lot of numbers. So if you don't mind going blind, looking at it. We look at how many times we enter the water. We're also gathering data from Piedmont because we have found that in the past, we don't always become notified of a water emergency that's taking place. They always call the fire department out. Pam doesn't always find out about it, but sometimes the hospital has that information. And they, they track these data points as well. So working together, the river safety team, the whitewater vendor, the fire department, we get a holistic look of really what's going on in our city and how we can best mitigate these, these tragedies so they don't take place again in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woodson.
Yes, thank you very much, Pam, and to your team. Can you tell me, when is it that you host the three camps each year?
That's Whitewater.
Yeah, it's summertime, that's when kids are out. And these are focused on, on young people. So we've had, we've had three this year. One was last week and two in June. And then we'll host, we have the World Cup coming, which will be very exciting for the city. That comes in October. And during the World Cup, we'll have another camp that stretches the whole 11 days of the World Cup, teaching young people how to be safe and how to use that resource well. So that'll be four this year.
I have a couple more questions. I have a request too. When the camps are scheduled, could you come and let us know? Do a presentation so that the committee, the community can see in case they want to participate?
Absolutely, we would love to do that. That'd be great.
And this is the best way. I, I always wonder, are we boring? But I guess lots of people love watching us. So, and we can use the CC channel too and, and they could help put the word out.
I'd be happy to do that. You know, we have this great resource right in our backyard. So the more kids that learn how to play safely on the river, they can enjoy the rest of their lives.
And I agree. Where are your seven life jacket loading stations at around the river?
Mimi, I knew that was going to be asked and I figured it would be you.
You know it.
Okay, so we have one at Lake Oliver. There's also one at Peggy Lane Boat Ramp, which is in Fortson. One at Idle Hour, which is also in Harris County, and then Blanton Creek. So basically from Muskogee, it's, it's Lake Oliver. And then the rest of them are north of that, all right? In Alabama, there's one at Longridge. Okay, that's somewhere around Valley, Alabama is what I have on my records, McCullough Road. And then we have one at Po'boy's Landing in Alabama. That's also in Lee County. And then the final is the Valley Park Boat Ramp. And I will say that those are serviced by community partners of this committee. So we have the Lake Harding Neighborhood Association that services every Friday. Those loner stations replenishes the life jackets, makes sure everything's good to go as far as functioning and the right type of life jacket. And then also, we have 1827 real estate in Harris County that, that services the two up in Harris County or the three now. And then we have the Kiwanis Club of Columbus that services the one at Lake Oliver. So they do that every Friday.
Okay, I just had another request. And the reason I'm saying this is because I know for myself and I know Tucker does it too because we're friends on Facebook. So every time we know of an event or something, we're posting it because everybody don't watch the same news or the same media or things like that. So I had a suggestion that before the summer comes, just before the kids are let out to school, maybe a campaign or something to the schools. maybe a, a campaign or something to the schools, the Boys and Girls Scouts, the YMCA, even our Parks and Rec After School Program. So that parents and students know about this activity so they can participate and understand it's fun to be in the water, but you need to be responsible in the water. And sometimes, you know, Columbus, you know, Columbus is a wonderful place. It has a lot to do. People just don't know, you know, where to look or what. But when we're talking about our children, I think our biggest resources is going right to the school before the summer ends. Because then the word will get out. And if not, you know, to some of these organizations where parents are working um and don't get the information. The kids never bring it in their book bag.
Sure, sure.
They never do. Mine didn't either. But um, I, I just think we need to get the word out more because I see all these great activities. And I'm like, man, I would have loved to go to that, go to that. So.
We do post it on social media and I will say this, I love your idea because we actually use Peach Jar within Muskogee County School District. And I believe that this activity, well Peach Jar is placed on the river. Um, the free life jacket event is placed on Peach Jar. But we could also put the loner stations for the summer, both in Harris County Schools and Muskogee County Schools. And that goes to every parent in those schools, the email that's listed on their school account. So that would be a great idea to be able to do that when the summer kicks off and I'll put that in my to-dos.
Yeah, and, and I don't know how. I'm just thinking, I'm listening and looking and saying, hmm, that's really good. And the reason I asked about that is because I walk my dog a lot on the river. And we always go over there and we sit in that little island and have a little picnic over there and watch everybody in whitewater. Um, so, and I didn't see those, so that's the reason why I asked, hmm, where do I have them at? I never see them, but now I know. Thank you very much.
I might add to that. I think that's a great suggestion and with the World Cup coming up in October. We, we are uh, we're start, actually starting that right now. We, we're working with uh schools in both Benny City and Columbus to have an, have them gather in the auditoriums. We're gonna go and tell them about what's coming up on the World Cup and also use that as a teaching time to uh begin teaching kids about wearing PFDs and how to approach the river. So, and that will take place this September.
Awesome. You know, and, and the other reason why I thought about the Boys and Girls Club is because of Friday, I went to the Boys and Girls Club on Casita Road. And they had a leadership summit. Friday night they had, Friday during the day, they had um different speakers about respect, you know, loving yourself, learning, you know, looking at your future. But then on Saturday, they had like a big um party and the kids were, and you can see the excitement of the kids when they looked at the speakers about the things that they were learning about. And that is the reason why I suggested those organizations. Because the more activities we have that children can be around, the less crime we're going to have because they're not going to be involved in it.
Absolutely. Totally agree.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for everything you do year round. And, and you know, one final thought, and that is, you know, we, we don't really realize how fortunate we are to have that kind of natural resource that runs right adjacent to our downtown. I mean, to have those kind of, of uh recreational opportunities. I mean, mo- most of it's God made, right? So, so we just were very fortunate to be living where we live. And because though it, it's so close, we lose sight of the fact that it is a, it is nature. And we'll never make that river safe. But because of folks like these, they're making it safer, a little bit safer uh with everything they do. So thank you for being uh, being attentive to what's going on. And, and I can't wait till, when is that? It's October.
The third through the eleventh October.
Yeah, we're, we're uh, we're, it, it, the world's gonna be watching.
And I, I'll, let me add this real quick. Today, we had two Polish athletes uh sign up for the World Cup this fall. We're, they're signing, we've got Irish, uh, they're signing up from all over the world. So it's gonna be a real treat.
Unbelievable. All right. Well, thank y'all very much and Pam, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, um, we're gonna bring up Mr. City Manager, uh, your item, I think it's six on yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna ask um HR Director Rita Hollowell um to come to uh the podium along with Mark Holcomb with Evergreen Solutions Consultants. Um, they are going to brief you, us, the public on the compensation pay plan uh that uh we took on some time ago. And uh, they're here to talk about that uh tonight. Um, HR Director Rita Hollowell.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, good evening to Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, yes, today we wanted to have a consultant here uh with Evergreen who has completed this study on our classification and compensation uh plan. Uh, as you all might recall, and I'll have a uh timeline of where we go from here. We'll briefly talk about that and send it to you all electronically on tomorrow. Um, but we onboarded the consultant, uh contracted with the consultant in January of this year. And based on the timeline that the consultant said that they could conduct and finish up the study, they said, we can get it done in about six months. And so we are right at that six month time period. And the consultant is here and he is ready to present the full report of what they have done uh in terms of the study and the analysis as well as the recommendation. Uh, and then I want to finish up with just a timeline so that that gives us all a guide in terms of where do we go from here. Uh, but without any further delay, I'll ask uh Mark Holcomb. He is the uh project lead uh on this particular project. Uh, he uh with Evergreen Solutions, he's been uh just at our beck and call really in terms of doing this. We have regular communication with him uh and his team and they've just been really, really great to work with. And uh, so he's gonna present the uh, make the presentation tonight. And then certainly be able to answer and respond to, he and I both, any questions that you all might have. And then we'll wrap it up with just the brief timeline of where we go from here. So, Mark.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for having me here to present these um findings and, and some recommendations. And um, you know, uh, all the good information we have on this uh compensation class study that we've been engaged in. Um, as we've just said for the last several months, uh, many, many hours gone into this. What we want to talk about today, uh, we do have study goals, project phases. That'll be a little bit of recap of, you know, what we did. Oh, thank you. Uh, that'll be a little bit of recap over what we've done up to this point, the phases that we took, the steps in the engagement to get us to this point. We will recap some of the findings that we had uh from employee meetings. So we came out in person, we met with employees and we did get some feedback from employees on some of their thoughts, their concerns, the things they, they like, the things they don't like. And so we'll share some of that with you today as well. We do have the current system findings that do talk about your current compensation system. So where did we see things that needed to be tweaked, updated, um, things that we noticed before we ever went out to the market? Uh, we sort of said, hey, based on what you're doing now, we s- we see some items or some areas that we may want to update. Uh, we do have the market results again to, to share with everybody to talk about. Um, you know, how do you compare to the market and, and what does that mean? Where do you find yourself uh currently and, and what are we projecting for the future um as we get into the recommendations? So the recommendations we will talk about. We do have a recommendation for um updating salaries, for um updates to the compensation and classification systems that you're using. We'll have some costs um to talk about with you as well, um, and then some next steps. And again, Rithra will share some of that as well about the, the timeline and sort of the next things coming up in the, um, in the order. So with a compensation and classification study like this, we do want to emphasize there are a couple main goals that we've kept in mind throughout the entire process. So throughout, uh, you know, looking at job titles, looking at salary ranges, looking at a pay scale, we do want to make sure that your system has as high a degree of internal equity as possible. Um, it is one of the main goals. So internal equity refers to how your positions relate to one another. And so if you have two different employees in two different positions and they're working at a similar level of leadership, they have similar levels of complexity, um, that, that, they're working in job duties and tasks that are very similar and similar level. You'd want to make sure you're able to compensate them at a rate um that is comparable to one another. We also wanted to keep in mind external equity though. So when, when you're looking at an employee here within the city versus what they could make elsewhere. Um, that's another thing we absolutely had to keep in mind because it's not just how you compare to your, your coworkers here. Of course, we know there are other employers here in the area. Employees do go to work too. Of course, they could move certainly with the rise of remote work as well. They may not have to move. They may be able to stay here, enjoy um the, the, the wonderful Columbus life, um, that, that river we just heard about and, and still work, you know, remote and, and, and um, so those are definitely two of the main things we wanted to keep in mind. None of the recommendations we made are one hundred percent market or internal. We did try to keep everything in mind with both, although obviously sometimes you had to respect the market a little more. Sometimes you do have to lean into the internal equity. Uh, but with the recommendations, we'll talk about the, at, at the end, I do want to emphasize that point. Um, that uh both of those goals were kept in mind. With the project phases, um, starting off at the beginning of the engagement, the beginning of the project, we did have the introduction and kickoff. Um, that was between ourselves, between HR, um, between city leadership to really make sure we were on the right track. Um, to make sure we understood everything that we could understand about your current systems to collect some data. Um, yeah, Rithra and her HR team have been excellent to provide us all the data we've needed, job descriptions, pay scales, um, salary information, et cetera. Um, but collecting uh appropriate client data also included meeting with employees and, and getting their feedback, hearing from them, as I mentioned, about their concerns, about their thoughts, about the things that they liked and didn't like about the current system. Um, so when we came out in person, again, we did meet with um the council at that time, got a little bit of feedback from, from you all in a couple different groups. We met with employees, we met with department directors and leaders. Um, and really tried to, to make sure we were on the right track, collecting all the information that we could. That led us into phase two, phase two being that internal analysis, um, reviewing all the data we just collected. So again, reading through job descriptions and current pay plans, but also reviewing the employee surveys. Um, each of the employees here had the opportunity to submit a job survey to us to tell us about what they did and what their current job responsibilities entail. Um, those surveys not only went to the employees, the supervisors had an opportunity to look at those and, and make sure that we had the complete and, and accurate information all the way up through the department head. So that, so that survey process, there was a lot of information for us to look at and review. Um, and, and we did that in phase two of the engagement. The assessment of current conditions is, is our name for a, a set of analyses that we run. Um, again, looking at things like compression, which we'll talk about, looking at your current pay scales and making sure that we're comfortable again with, with how you um are currently administering compensation and identifying those recommendations when we're not. Phase three then takes us to the market. Um, and, and so after we're pretty comfortable with your current system, we start making comparisons with your current system to your peers to see what's going on outside and seeing what your peers are doing. So with the compensation survey, we do look at market positioning for different positions, for the city as a whole, for different departments and areas and job families. And so we did want to make sure, um, again, we had a very thorough understanding of how you relate to that market. Bringing everything back together to phase four, uh, that's the solution with some recommendations, implementation options, and then reporting. Uh, included in that reporting would be presentations like today. So of course, me sharing the results with you and with the public tonight. Um, that, that is included in the reporting, but we'll also have some written documentation that will come along with that. Um, so that anybody who either wasn't able to attend or would like a refresher, would like to see a little bit more detail um, on the, the methodology or the processes that we took, we'll have that written report available as well. So with the employee meetings, um, as I mentioned before, we had a lot of comments. We, we had a lot of positive comments and we had some concerns as well. So we boiled them down to, to just really the most important or the most uh impactful comments we receive uh sometimes by many, many employees. As far as the positive things, the, the things that employees responded, we said, what do you like about working here? You know, why, why do you enjoy your job? Why do you come back day after day? There were a couple things that were mentioned, um, you know, multiple times, many times. Benefits was one of them. So employees did mention, look, we have a pretty good benefits package. If, if I went elsewhere, I don't know if I'd get the same level of benefits that I get here. Um, employees mentioned uh specifically time off, healthcare and work-life balance. So again, they understand it's not just about the salaries. It, it, it is about that total compensation package. And that was something that employees did mention um a- as a major positive. Another was the culture. And so the, the culture at the city involves not only the people they work with, that they did mention their coworkers. Many of them mentioned their direct supervisors and, and said, look, I feel respected. I feel like I'm, I'm in a good place. I, I can use my talents because of the team around me. Um, but they also mentioned the uh service-oriented mission of the city. So, so employees did mention, look, maybe I could make a little bit more if I was in a private sector company. Uh, but it wouldn't be the same. I wouldn't be serving my community. Um, I, I wouldn't be serving the area and the citizens that, that I'm working here for. Um, that was something that was mentioned a lot. Uh, and then the schedule as well. So again, talking about the things they enjoyed, many employees mentioned as compared to, um, you know, of course retailer shift work, they've got a very defined set schedule. Um, but many of the employees who do have that schedule, um, you know, mentioned over and over again, they like the, the nine to five, the eight to five. Um, you know, typical schedule. They felt that it gives them the opportunity for that work-life balance by having weekends off, by having, um, you know, evenings with their family and then the, the paid time off as well. So with that being said, all the positive comments, we did of course have some concerns as well. Um, external equity was, was probably one of the biggest concerns. Um, along with the, the next one, internal equity. But the, the external equity piece, uh, from employees mentioning specific examples of, hey, I feel like I could make more if I worked at this place. Or I know of one person that, at another place making more. Um, to others just saying, look, I, I don't think we're keeping up with the market. I feel like our rates are too low. I, I don't think this is what people are paying elsewhere. Um, of course, we do have to recognize the time that we're doing this study. You know, the market is moving, there's inflation, employees are aware of that. And certainly that was a big concern that people said, look, this is something that we'd like to see addressed. We're doing a compensation study. We want you looking at that external market and making sure that we get it right. Internal equity was another concern. Um, we did have a lot of employees saying things like, you know, hey, I've been here for ten years and I'm making the same amount as a new hire, somebody who, who started last year, they're making the same amount I'm making. Um, you had concerns about people saying, hey, am, am I making enough as a supervisor to account for the additional work that I'm, I'm responsible for? Um, we will talk about those compression pieces later, so I don't mean to, to gloss over it now. But again, we will come in more detail in a couple slides to address this point specifically. Um, workload is the last one that employees mentioned. So with workload, there's an, a, a few different ways they mentioned it. Some of them said, hey, my job has evolved, um, and maybe the pay hasn't kept up. So, so I'm, I'm still getting paid the same amount I was, um, you know, a few years ago, but I'm doing a whole lot more now than I used to. Uh, some employees felt like because of um vacancies, you know, if, if, if your department's supposed to have ten people and you're working with six, there's still the work that ten people are supposed to be doing. You just have to cover it with fewer people. So that was some examples employees mentioned as well. Um, and then some said, hey, our job descriptions really just don't capture everything we do. I feel like if, if the job description, if, if the, the job descriptions have the detail and if we were able to analyze my position fairly, um, you know, maybe the workload wouldn't be as big of a deal if, if the city understood all the work I'm doing. Um, so that was something that employees did share as well. So with the current system findings, we do have some strengths and some weaknesses. This is where we get into sort of our assessment of current conditions. This is looking internally at your current system. This does not involve the market yet. Um, but on this uh internal system, what we do see is you do have a, a well-designed, simple and easy to understand pay structure. You know, you've, you've got the step and grade system. I think employees are able to look at that and say, hey, if I'm a grade fourteen, if I'm a, a step G, you know, they understand what that means. They know where they should be. Um, a- and they can also look at, hey, where would I like to be if, if I move up a couple steps or a couple grades? They're able to look at that. Um, there is a, a very consistent design to the plan. So again, we like that as well with um the consistent progression between grades as well as between steps moving up the plan. Now that being said, getting into the weaknesses, um, this is something that we discovered in, in conversations with employees, in conversations with HR, um, and just looking at the data to, to really see where employees were within the pay plan. The, the design of the pay plan combined with uh, you know, the availability of finances has not led the city to uh grant step increases that um kept up with employee expectations. And, and so what you find is if an employee comes in and they're on their third step of their, of their grade, they're on step C, they're not advancing year after year. They would expect to move, um, you know, each year to a higher step. It, it has not happened and that has led to some compression. Um, and so we'll show you a couple exhibits to talk about that compression in a moment. But again, we did identify that compression. A couple notes before we move on to it. Um, more than eighty percent of employees are below the midpoint of their pay grade. Um, and so again, you would expect new hires, you would expect employees who, who don't have as much experience to be below the midpoint. Um, but, but in most systems we look at, again, the number probably wouldn't be fifty percent, but it'd probably be fifty-five to sixty, somewhere in that range. So getting up to that eighty percent, um, it does show a higher level of compression in the ranges than you would typically see. Um, we do also have fifty percent of employees in quartile one. So when, when we divide the grade into quartiles, divide the, the pay grade into four even segments, the lowest segment down near the minimum of your pay grades, that's where half of your employees are sitting. So again, talking about that compression, that, that's really what we're getting at um a- and what we want to talk about. Lastly, and this is what we'll show in, in an exhibit in just a moment, there is some compression between employees and supervisors and that can happen, um, again, when supervisors aren't receiving increases as they've been at the city for, for. Um, again, when supervisors aren't receiving increases as they've been at the city for, for a number of years. And so moving forward into some of these exhibits, I do have two different exhibits I wanna share with you. One on range compression and one on rank compression, and so we'll start with. Um, the, the rank compression is what we're gonna share first, talking about rank compression, that refers to employees and their supervisors. Uh, not being significantly or, or, excuse me, sufficiently, um, differentiated in pay. And so that means you might have a, a supervisor who supervises five or ten people, they, they have extra complexity, extra duties, extra responsibility. And their pay may only be five percent higher than their employee, we would call that some compression that you typically wouldn't wanna see. Uh, this graph here shows the compression among pay grades. Um, anybody in green there, uh, w- we would say they're in a pretty good position, you, you've got at least twenty percent spacing between the employee and the supervisor. Those in yellow, um, that's where we wanna start looking at that and saying, hey, i- it may not be as big of an issue as some of the others yet. But, but we're getting a little bit too close for comfort, um, you've got employees between, um, you know, twenty, but all the way up to five percent below their. Their, um, employees there with the supervisors, so you do see that yellow, in some pay grades, it's up to thirty or forty percent of the pay grade. Um, showing those people getting a little bit closer than, than we would typically like to see. Uh, but beyond the yellow, you do have that orange and blue at the top, a- and that shows the places where employees are making. Uh, within five percent of their supervisor's salary, so, so maybe an employee's making, you know, fifty thousand, a supervisor's making fifty-one, that'd be an example. Um, just really right there together, um, and the blue actually represents employees going above the supervisor. Um, that can happen in some cases, you know, if, if you have an employee who's been at the city for thirty years and a, and a brand-new supervisor. Sometimes it may be appropriate, um, but again, looking at those orange and blue colors, looking at how far they go into the pay grades. You do see in some areas up to, um, you know, five percent in many grades, and some grades more than ten percent of the employees. Are, are making as much or, or more than their supervisors, so certainly something we wanted to address. Um, the other type of compression we wanted to talk to you about is the range compression, and so that shows employees. Not moving through their pay ranges at the rate they would expect, and so when you look at pay range compression. Um, again, as I've stated before, a brand-new employee might expect to be on pay grade one, uh, excuse me, step one. So it's okay to be on step one if, if you've got no experience, if you've just been hired. Uh, but the expectation is after you've been at the city for ten or fifteen years, you would not be on step one, you would not be close to step one. You would expect to have moved through the pay grade, um, hopefully up to, close to the pay grade midpoint i- is what the expectation would be. Um, and so on this exhibit, you can see once again, the orange and blue represents the compression, you do see in most pay grades there. Um, twenty, thirty, uh, even forty percent of employees again in, in many pay grades. Are feeling that compression, that's showing them behind their expected, uh, pay progression rate. And so for this, again, it's just a simple analysis of how many years have you been, um, in your classification, where would you expect to be? Um, and if you're below that rate, um, again, you're showing up here in that orange, that blue color. So with the, um, internal piece discussed and, and, um, reviewed, let's move, uh, this clicker, there we go. Uh, let's move to the market, let's start talking about the external piece, then we'll bring them both back together, uh, for our recommendations. So with the market, we did go out and, and survey, um, you know, a, 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 a large group of peers. We wanted to make sure we were able to understand, um, what the local market looked like, um, but also what the market looked like throughout the state. And what the market looked like for similar organizations, you know, throughout the region, we added a few of those peers as well. So you will notice the vast majority of this sample, um, is gonna be made up of other cities and counties throughout the state of Georgia. Um, but you do have a couple right across the river there in Alabama, um, you also have a few at the bottom, so different types of organizations, you've got. Um, the, the local school district as well as some other cities with comparable statistics, um, and demographics throughout the southeast. So with these, uh, points of comparison, so these nineteen, uh, different organizations that you have, we did adjust for cost of living. From all of the salary data that we got back, uh, of course, we understand. Um, that i- it's not necessarily appropriate to look at a salary, somebody's being paid in downtown Atlanta versus what you're being paid in Columbus. Uh, but that being said, again, with the cost of living adjustment, we can say, does your salary here compare? To the spending power that somebody would have with the same salary elsewhere, be it Atlanta or another state, or, or. Um, even across the river, looking at the, the spending power employees might have. We looked at more than a hundred and twenty-five different positions, we did return more than seven matches per position. Um, a- and again, many positions had fifteen to nineteen responses, the, the more common positions you would expect to see. Um, some of the more specific individualized positions, we're only able to pull a few matches for. Um, but again, with this data, we did consider this an excellent market response and definitely gave us what we needed. Uh, to be able to make a, a, a statement on your market positioning. With the market response, the actual, um, you know, the, the unadjusted results that we returned. Do show you, um, almost ten percent behind the market at the minimum, so, so an eight percent at the minimum. Uh, and six and a half percent at the maximum, so you catch up a little bit versus your peers towards the maximum of the range. Uh, but that being said, of course, we wanna put it in terms of, of spending power that, that an employee would have here, um, in, in the city of Columbus. Um, you still find the city falling about five percent behind the market at the minimum of the range, so four point six percent. Um, at the minimum of the range, that does show again that the city has fallen behind the market. And as I referenced in the beginning, uh, when, when talking about the employee comments, um, and sort of what time period we in. Uh, we are in right now, we know the market's not standing still. Um, many of your, your peer organizations that, that we looked at in the study a- and outside of the study. Are advancing their pay scales five, ten, or, or even sometimes more than ten percent. So seeing a five percent gap there, I, I do wanna to, to mention, hey, you're in an okay position, you know, you're, you're a little behind. But we can make some strides to make sure you stay with that expected market movement, that's what we'll talk about with the recommendations in a moment. Um, the, the city is falling behind currently, and as we get to some of these recommendations, we're gonna tell you. What do we think the city should do about that, so starting, um, sort of at, at a more general level, we will drill down to some of the specifics. And the costs in just a moment, the first thing that we wanted to recommend. Really is the, is the thing that you have to look at first in order to make some of the other things happen, um, adopting an adjusted pay scale and, and pay plan. That will allow you to, um, administer compensation more fairly and equitably in the future. So we did think it was important after, again, conversations, um, with, with city leadership, after looking at how the pay scale has been administered in the past. We wanted to reformat the step systems a little bit, one of the problems that, that we identified with the current step system. Is that the steps were two and a half percent, uh, which is very expensive, so every single year, the city was left in a position to say, can we advance employees? By a full two and a half percent, yes or no, um, a- a- and I believe every year, or if not almost every year, the answer was no. The, the city was not advancing steps, that's how you have situations where, where, uh, you know, well, as the graph showed with the compression. That's how you have that situation with eighty percent of employees below the midpoint, um, and fifty percent of employees in quartile one down below. Ne- uh, excuse me, next to the minimum at the pay grade, is because if you come in at step, um, you know, C or D, you expect to move. If you're not granting movement, um, that's where that compression comes from. So we did break up the steps, make them a little bit smaller to give the city the flexibility to advance a pay step every single year. Um, and the ideal would be to advance two pay steps, so what we've done is, we've given you one percent, um, one percent movement between steps. Um, so now we're using a numeric system, if you're on step, um, two, you would expect to go to step three or four. Next year, so the city has the ability to advance multiple pay steps per year, depending on the availability of finances and funds. The ideal and, and something I wanna emphasize now that, that I have mentioned before, I wanna mention again. Um, this pay system will only keep you from running into more compression issues if you are advancing steps. Um, so if you take this new pay skill system, if you don't advance steps next year, the year after, the year after that. I- it's going to be the same situation where you have employees and supervisors making the same amount. Uh, ten-year employees and one-year employees making the same amount, so I do wanna emphasize that, that was the big change that we made right off the bat. The next thing we did, because we did go to a new, um, pay plan, a, a new system, we had to a- uh, assign. Positions, assign job classifications to that pay scale. So we used the market data that we collected, we used the internal analysis that we looked at, and we've assigned positions. Um, to an equitable placement on the pay scale, and so, um, e- employees, it's not gonna be the exact same, uh, numbering system that they're used to. So the, the, the G nine, G twelve, G fourteen, it's not gonna be the same system, but we did assign again each classification in the city. Um, to a new pay grade, um, that we believe puts them in a market competitive as well as internally equitable position. Um, lastly, and, and something we wanna get a little bit further into now with the, the recommendation, is going to be. The recommended, uh, recommended implementation methodology to actually place employees. Um, into their new pay ranges, and so in order to address the compression, we had to do something to, to space out employees within the pay scale. Um, and so we do have, um, a couple of details to share with you, um, followed by the cost for the, the recommended implementation methodology. So the first thing we're recommending is for general employees, we are recommending you space out employees within the pay scale. Based on a zone, um, based methodology, and so the, the zone-based methodology we looked at is. For all of your, you know, new hires that, that have been here from zero to three years, um, you look at them in one way and one zone. For the employees who have been here between three and six years, um, and this is based on the implementation date right now, the, the cost of projected for October first. But, uh, that can be u- uh, updated depending on when that implementation happens. Um, employees who have been here between three and six years would go into zone two, they would receive, uh, or, or receive a placement in the pay scale. Further along than those in zone one, uh, employees who have been here between six and nine years, of course, would be in zone three and so on and so forth. And so what this does is it looks at how long employees have been in their job title, it gives them credit. Uh, for the time that they have spent in their current, uh, classifications, and it spaces them out through the pay range. Based on that time, um, so this implementation again will address, uh, some of your compression issues that you're having. It will, uh, reduce essentially that orange and blue color that you saw in those graphs, um, to make sure that, that employees are spaced out. Within their range, now, an important thing that I do wanna mention is, is while we mentioned. All employees in zone one are recommended the same placement in that zone and, and zone two and zone three, no salaries would be reduced. So if you are an employee, let's say, if, if you're a hypothetical employee, and you've only been in your classification title for two years. But for s- for some reason, you're one of the exceptions to that compression, you're at the midpoint. You would not be recommended to decrease, you would keep your same current salary, so nobody would receive a decrease. Um, almost everybody would be receiving increases, um, a- and then again, it would place you based on your time in classification. For public safety employees, that was the general employees with that zone-based approach, for public safety employees. We are recommending a, um, a, a different placement methodology for them, what it would do is it would be a longevity-based approach. It is similar, um, but it would actually grant one step for every single year, so it's not a zone-based approach, but every single year. That you spent in your rank or, or in your classification, you would receive a step. Additionally, that longevity, um, i- i- increase would kick in for every one of the longevity milestones essentially that you hit. So i- if you've been in your classification three years, you would get an additional step. Five years, you'd get another additional step, seven, ten, fifteen and twenty, um, so, so the implementation then would place you into your new scale. Based on the time in classification as well as how many of those longevity, uh, what I'll call milestones you, you would achieve, you would receive an additional step. For those, um, and so that would, again, move both general employees as well as public safety employees. Through the scales, um, to address that compression. Two additional things that we do wanna share a- about the, the, um, adjustments that we made. For the public safety positions, um, i- in particular, based on the, the public safety market that we're in right now. Based on the significant vacancies that you have right now, um, a- and, and based on the city's desire to ensure that you're able to address those issues. We are recommending pay ranges, um, for, for the public safety employees that would be above and beyond, quote-unquote, wh- wh- what we received in the market. And so the market data that we received when we came back with that, we looked at that, even when we projected out. Uh, we looked at, um, you know, going between five and ten percent above the market data. Um, we, we really felt like that may not address all the, the concerns that you're having with recruitment and retention. And so we are recommending the public safety positions, I'll share the exact rates in a moment for those, uh, entry-level ranks. We are recommending that they would be, um, placed essentially at an above and beyond market position to, um, address the significant concerns that we have there. Lastly, we have for posi- for classifications requiring a C D L. Um, we are recommending, um, increased placement for them as well, again, due to the significant market. Um, pressure that you're feeling on those positions, and, um, I can say again, the C D L, um, positions, uh, classifications requiring a C D L. That is not exclusive here to Columbus, that, that's one of the main and one of the first questions that I get, working all across the country is. Well, I, I need to talk to you about our positions, C D Ls, that, that's what we hear over and over again. So we are looking at pegging those positions to a market placement of twenty-one dollars an hour at the minimum. And that would be based on your internal structure and hierarchy, um, so for some example positions we have. Uh, would be bus drivers, fleet tech twos, motor equipment operator threes, et cetera, positions at that level in the internal analysis. Would start at a rate of twenty-one dollars an hour. So for, for the whole job family then, some of the positions would start slightly lower, so for example, you've got a motor equipment operator three. Your motor equipment operator two would start slightly below that, um, but the entire job family, all of those C D L positions. Would be looking at receiving significant increases to address that recruitment and retention concern you have. Um, with that very in-demand, um, license that, that, that those positions are required to have. Um, some positions again would go a little bit above that, um, so for your, your senior, um, fleet techs and, and positions like that, they'd be slightly above. So the twenty-one dollars an hour is where we would peg those positions based on that internal hierarchy there. So, um, a little bit of detail, as I mentioned, on those, um, public safety positions. We are recommending, um, again, that the police officers, sheriff deputy and firefighters start at forty-five thousand dollars. That is before the O L S supplement that they would keep. And so with that O L S supplement, the starting pay for police officers would be above fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, that's coming in with no education, no experience, that would be the minimum of the range for a starting police officer. Um, the O L S supplement for the other classifications referenced above, again, would, would take to forty-eight thousand, one twenty-one. Um, and again, that, that's people coming in without, um, advanced degrees or, or significant experience or education from elsewhere. That's your entry level starting pay for those. Um, pay reform is factored in to the new structure, so again, all employees would keep their current pay reform. Uh, nobody would lose any salary or, or lose anything they've attained at this time, uh, but there would be a new longevity adjustment, as I referenced before. Uh, that would replace that in the future, so while employees keep the pay reform they have, they're gonna use that longevity system under this recommendation. Um, and so again, if, if you hit year three, if you hit year five, seven, ten, fifteen, twenty. Um, whatever step is, is granted by council that year, those public safety employees would receive that additional step. To account for longevity in this system, um, we did look at a, a comparison. Um, based on the current system and pay reform that's in place right now in this longevity system, um, and this does come out ahead for public safety employees. The, the idea was to make sure we're rewarding those positions, adjusting for the market, making sure that you're, you're going to be able to fill those positions, not have the vacancies. Um, that, that you're seeing right now, um, and, and so that's the new system that we're recommending for the public safety. So with the total cost then, we, we're showing a minimum cost there, just so you have a reference of, of what's going in to the pay scale adjustment. But what's going into the compression adjustment as well, we are recommending the, um, the, the parity zone approach. And the, the longevity zone approach, um, that are listed on the bottom, and so the cost there that we're looking at. Um, again, these are the total reoccurring salary-only costs, so it doesn't include benefits, um, or, or anything else extra there. Um, but you are looking at a cost of, for general employees of, uh, a little more than six million, um, six hundred thousand, and again, public safety. Um, slightly fewer employees, um, but, but would be about six million, uh, two hundred thousand there as well. Um, it does represent, again, a significant cost, we know that, um, but that, that total cost then bringing you to, um, almost thirteen million. That, that's the new cost, um, based on the most current salaries, I believe it's, it's as of, um, I believe it's as of July fifteenth or, or somewhere thereof. So, um, it does include the, the recent two percent, um, a- adjustment that was granted. That's the information that I did wanna share with you all tonight, so about the cost, about the recommendations a- and some of the specifics diving into the methodology there. Um, this information, again, we've been working very closely with H R as well as finance to ensure that. Um, it's something that you're going to be able to, uh, afford, that you're gonna be able to maintain, and, and certainly we understand the expense. Um, we, we don't recommend, uh, that, that expense slightly, but we know, as I mentioned before, you know, your peers are moving. Um, you, you do have a small market, uh, gap right now, you do have, um, some, some, you know, not, not a small compression problem. Um, and, and so we did wanna mention, uh, uh, a- and, and recommend essentially, uh, what we believe will put you in a, an equitable. Um, position going forward, both internally as well as externally. Uh, Rita, do you wanna give an update on the timeline first, or to answer questions now, uh, what's the preference?
We got a few questions, um.
Questions first, okay.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, um, I have a question in reference to the public safety. Um, when you talk about the O L S supplement, um, in reference, so the police officer. Um when you talk about the OLOST supplement, um in reference, so the police officer's starting pay would be fifty thousand one hundred and twenty one dollars. When you say other classifications um would start at forty eight thousand one hundred and twenty one dollars? Is that the deputy sheriff firefighter and EMT, are those the?
Correct, it was referencing the other ones specifically mentioned right above in the previous bullet, not not every other classification. Um at the bottom there, there is that table and that chart that essentially shows the specific classifications um that we're referencing there with those recommended starting salaries. Um again, the starting salaries that we have there are base, so you would need to add the OLOST into that. The police wo- would receive that five thousand one hundred and the others would get that three thousand. Does that make sense?
Yes, I was just making sure, because under it was also correctional officer. We weren't, they wouldn't be making forty eight.
Correct, they wouldn't, so in the first bullet, you you're you're absolutely correct. The correctional officers would come in slightly below that um at at the the recommended rate there. So you're correct. Um the the other um could have been more clear with my language there, just referred to that first bullet saying the poli- uh the sheriff deputy and firefighter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you for pointing that out.
Counselor Woods?
Oh, um. In the yeah, in the presentation, I didn't see anything about the specialties. What was your recommendation on that? Like either on the bomb squad or language differential or divers, that kind of stuff?
A- absolutely, so we do have market data on that information and and we we've got that information um to include as well. We don't have a specific recommendation to share tonight on that. Um but again, i- in general, in terms of both the benefits and the specialty pays. Um w- we didn't find it to be nearly as concerning and and nearly as high of a priority as um these internal and e- external concerns that we've shared tonight as well. And of course, will not have nearly the fiscal impact. Um so that's why we did just uh decide and want to to focus on the priorities like this tonight. We do have that information, it will be included in the final written report. Um so that would include um a- again, basically a a much more detailed summary um of of everything that we went through in the entire engagement.
Would that would that portion of it be brought to council so that um everyone's aware of it and and the public safety? And everyone that has a specialty in our government center is aware of what we're talking about, what the dollar amount is. I think that's very important for recruiting, recruiting engineering, recruiting police officer EMS. That's really important because we're trying to compete with other communities. And that is a benefit, you know, that's a a plus besides the five thousand um dollars um as a bonus, and people look for that.
Yes, as Mark stated, uh Counselor Woodson, that information as it relates to specialty pay or differential pay will be included in the consultant's final report as well as the ordinance uh that will be approved by council. It would allow for differential pay. And one of the reasons I think, you know, there's not as much information on that at right now. Some departments already have forms of specialty pay, but that is something that has to also be developed for in each individual departments. What do you consider to be special? That's something that needs to be worked out, but it 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 provides it an umbrella so that it could be added at one point, if it's not added now. If the police department or another department decided that this is something that works. If it comes up through the chain, the city manager approves it, comes into full council, that's something that can be inclu- included, and the plan allows for that.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm I'm understanding you correctly. Is that coming with the ordinance to approve this or is it going to be separately?
It will be in the ordinance to approve this, the allow to allow differential pay.
But it doesn't break down what the differential pay? When will we get that information?
That is something really that has to be, again, each department makes a recommendation in terms of whether they believe differential pay is something that will benefit their department, is something that will help them uh recruit and retain uh their employees. Uh so that's something that, just like what we have career ladders as an example. Uh a department could have a position that has a career ladder. That's something that's born within the department. The department develops that criteria, makes a recommendation to human resources and is approved by the city manager. That's the way this would work as well.
Have we sent that request to the different departments, like we did the survey for this?
No, but now this week, yes, this week. This will be the department's opportunity when they meet with the consultant this week and see what the recommendation is for their particular department, they'll have an opportunity. If that's something that's of interest to them, that's something that they can bring up for consideration.
Are they aware of that? Because you know, I understand that you're saying they're, if that's their interest. But at the moment when the consultant go talk to them, they're going to be focused on that pay. And then later on, they're going to come back and probably say, so if we can tackle all of it at one time, I would prefer that. So I would suggest that we send out, I don't know if you do it or the consultant does it, that we send out something to all the department heads, letting them know that we're looking at this specialty pay or differential pay, whatever you want to call it, for them to look at their department so that when the consultant comes, they're prepared to ask those questions to the consultant.
Topic of discussion at every meeting that that the consultant has with those departments this week could be brought up.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just think that's very, very important because it's been brought to my attention by a couple officers. And then it's been brought to my attention by a couple of um general employees. And that's why I've been harping on it so much, because it's been brought to my attention. That's why I wanted you to come back or or have that conversation, because I want them to know that, you know, I heard them and I made the request. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's all the questions that we have so far. Uh well, I'm sorry, we got one more. Counselor Thomas?
Um Mr. Holcomb, on the slide that shows the um the last one that you had up there, the the salaries?
I think they're going to switch back to it in just a moment, yep.
Okay.
Oh, we're.
That one. Uh you have correctional officer. I want to make sure that I that we're using the same terminology. Uh is this correctional officer the correctional officer who works in the Muskogee County Jail? Or is it the correctional officer that works at Muskogee County Prison?
It it is both of those classifications. I just wanted to double check to make sure it is both of those classifications. Uh would be the correctional officer in the the pay grade C one that you see designated there.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I I'm clear on that, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. Rita?
So counsel, uh where do we go from here? We want to talk about the next steps in terms of getting us to the point of adoption and implementation. Because we know that this particular topic is top of mind of all of our employees. This is something that we have talked to them about for months now, and they have been expecting to see something. I've talked to employees often and they say, well, when are we going to see something about the pay and compensation study that you all are doing? So we want to be able to pro- provide a timeline. And this is a draft that gives us a guide in terms of when um this can actually be implemented once this adopted by council and human resources, finance and IT gets a chance to actually get the documentations that we need from the consultant and start it, start that process so that employees see something in their paycheck. So the timeline looks like this in terms of what you have there on the screen. I wanted to go back to July fifth where we did meet with the Chamber of Commerce and our private sectors of our community. Uh they have been a tremendous partner for us in this process of this classification and comp study. And uh they are also kind of our uh check, if you will, in terms of how we're doing uh as it relates to the business community and what we're trying to accomplish here. So we met with them on July fifth to brief them in terms of the status of the uh classification and comp study. Now, this was not our first engagement with the Chamber of Commerce. We had met with them back in February when we started the process with the consultant. They were very much involved in selecting the consultant for this particular project. So again, we met.
And let me just interrupt you. When you say Chamber of Commerce, you're ac- you're actually talking about leaders, business leaders, members of the chamber.
Yes.
You met with the chamber, but it was those business leaders from various private sector organizations.
Absolutely, yes, thank you for that clarification. And then after we met with uh those business leaders, we also um met with department directors so that they could provide, we could provide an update, a status report to them in terms of, you know, what's coming. This is what's coming. So we met with them on July fourteenth, but we also met with employees to give them a high level briefing to say, this is what it looks like. This is what we've been looking at from an internal, external uh perspective, you know, and what you can potentially expect. So that was very interesting. Not only did we meet with employees on July fourteenth, we also posted information, a recording of what was given on our website. We sent it out to all the employees and that's and they had an opportunity, this was a live briefing. They had an opportunity to ask the consultant questions as well. So we were glad to be able to do that. And then, of course, today, we're meeting with council. The consultant has presented to you the uh full report and recommendations uh for the for implementation of the classing comp study. So what's going to happen after today? Uh well, this week, the uh we have scheduled uh four employee, excuse me, department meetings with each department head. Uh the consultant will meet with each department head. And they will share specific information with the department head about their department and the employees in their department and what is being recommended. So that's that's going to be Wednesday through Friday of this week. That's about up to forty department head meetings, that individual department head meetings that have been scheduled. So that'll happen this week. So the departments will get a chance to take their information, look at it, talk with their employees about it. And then if they still have questions of the consultant, they're not sure of something, they want to change something. Maybe they want to talk about differential uh pay for certain positions in their department or specialty work that's done. They can talk about that. But then if they still have questions, they'll get a chance to come back on August three and four and individually meet with the consultant again, follow up with any questions and those sorts of things that they might have.
So if I may, um so when the consultant uh meets with department heads this week.
Yes.
Wednesday through Friday. Uh that department head will receive a printout or will be able to see for each employee by name.
Correct.
What's going to happen with that employee.
What the recommendation is.
By name.
Yes, what their proposed, what their current pay grade is, their their current position title, and then what's being recommended.
Sure.
Their uh recommended pay title and recommended pay. So yes, that's the information that will be given today, excuse me, this week. And so um then they have a an opportunity, as I said, on August three and four, that they have follow up questions, want to get some more information on three and four. The departments can again meet with um the consultant. And then on August second, we've got another meeting scheduled with the business community, those people who are involved with the chamber but have a interest in what we're doing and want to help support the effort of ensuring that employees that work for the city are fairly paid, fairly compensated. Uh so we'll meet with them on August the second. And then uh there's another council meeting that I inserted there on August ninth. And uh we should by this time, I think, have all the feedback that we that from employees, from um from departments. Then on August twenty third, uh we expect to have an ordinance on first reading uh to adopt the uh classification and comp study that's being recommended. So that will be on August twenty third, first reading, and then we'll come back again on August thirtieth uh for second reading uh of that ordinance. After that, then uh that gets approved, then it gets handed off to uh human resources, to uh finance and to IT to get the work done of trotting a path to getting this pay plan implemented in an employee's paycheck. Now, that is is a little bit difficult to say that it's going to be October first, or it's going to be November first, or it's going to be January first. Uh our goal is to have it done as quickly as we possibly can. Uh I I October first is probably not gonna happen, but you know, certainly by January first. But if we can have a November first, we'll, I think that we we're going to work toward that. But I, we don't know, but we feel like certainly by January first, it we will have it implemented, employees will see it in their paycheck. But the goal is to get it before January first, but certainly no later than that. Uh so that is the uh timeline in terms of our efforts to uh where we go from today uh and uh get this uh plan adopted and implemented. That's all I have.
Thank you. And you know, I've and I I applaud the efforts of the consultant and and the staff. Because I know the original statement was to have it by January first, and they've really been working hard and and very closely together to try to get it as early as possible. As soon as that, as soon as the mechanics of that can be entered, after it is approved, um we're going, we're going to give folks pay.
Absolutely.
And so mayor, um of course, you've seen the timeline and there will be more communication with the mayor and council uh between now and first reading. You know, we want to make sure that uh we share with you um how we pay for this, how we sustain it. And um and so uh in 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 the next few meetings, we will uh communicate uh further with you how um we pay for and sustain, and then more information about what uh employees, uh how it's going to impact employees in terms of the various ranks and whether it's averaging a certain percentage. Just we'll get you more, we'll make sure you get more information. Just want you to to know that.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right, with uh no more questions, we'll move on to the city attorney's agenda. The city attorney?
All right, thank you, mayor. Um for our first item, we've got an ordinance providing for the demolition of ten different structures.
Let's hold on just a second. If we if we could, if we could get those folks to go out to the atrium hallway, whatever it's called. Foyer.
Okay. This first item, mayor, is a demolition of ten different structures. Mr. Pruitt's here from the Inspection and Code Office will go through these one at a time. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to address a property on this list, please raise your hand or speak up.
And before, excuse me, before we go any farther, I have forgotten to announce this, but I wanted to make sure everybody knows that Counselor Barnes is present for this meeting. He's joining us virtually. Uh so he will be participating in votes and he will be able to hear uh any of the presentations that are made. So, thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
All right, Mr. Pruitt, you want to run through the slides? First property is eighty one Lafayette Drive, Crawford Smith Jr., owner. I don't see anybody. Seven seven six Terminal Court, Johnny General, owner.
Sir, if you want to make a a comment, you have an opportunity to come up and address counsel.
Please, uh give them your name and address for the record and then tell them what your request is.
You need the property address?
Your your home address, your your home address.
Oh, my name is Johnny General, three six seven Olsen Avenue, Columbus, Georgia, three one nine oh seven. I own the uh building over at seven seventy six Terminal Court. And um I acquired that building from the company, I did contract work with uh Southeast Enterprise. And they had asked me to give them uh, the ba- building was vacant and they had a fire there sometime. And they had asked me about doing a demo there. And I went over and gave them an estimate on it, and owner didn't want to invest any more money in the property. And I went over and gave them an estimate on it and owner didn't want to invest any more money in the property. So on, uh, January the twenty-third, twenty-twenty, it was quitclaim over to me. He thought about the option of just abandoning the building to the city. Uh, and I told him if he would do that, just let me have it and I would rehab it. Unfortunately, uh, after January the twenty-third of twenty-twenty, I was, uh, sick with COVID from March the, March the seventh up until right about the last week of July. And, uh, from that point, uh, we, I think we were going through the pandemic and lockdown. I met with the city about this property and it told me what I needed to do. Until I was, uh, got to a point where I could rehab it, they told me to just keep it clean and to put a tarp over it because of the, uh, the hole that had burned in one unit. It's a quadruplex unit. It's a building that has four two-bedroom units in it. The very first unit, uh, was damaged with fire and the other three units were just, uh, smoke damage. And from where the fire department pull holes in the ceiling to make sure there was no hot spots there. And so between that time and the time that I met with the city, in that area, they, the building was vandalized. They went in and they pushed holes in all of the walls to take the copper out of it. And they were stealing all the, uh, the metal and the hot water heaters in the units out of it. And the unit was boarded up. And, um, my wife is a dialysis nurse of thirty-one years at DCIU Fall. And after that point, unfortunately, every time she has to quarantine, being in the same house with her, I have to quarantine. And so that kind of through twenty-twenty, tw- up to twenty-twenty-one, kind of occupied a lot of my time and took me out of the line of work where I was doing this. I'm a licensed carpenter contractor myself, licensed here in Columbus since, uh, two thousand and nine. And that's why I was not in hurry to look for other contracts, because my plan is to do the work myself. Only thing I have to do is find a general contractor to pull a, a permit for the roof, to have that section of the roof reframed because it is commercial and I'm not authorized to pull a permit under commercial. And I do have some proposals for that. And I did the, uh, paperwork to show the cost of what it would cost to rehab this building. And, uh, I had interest in it because I want to rehab this building. I know that's a low-income area. I know it's a high-crime area. But I, I do feel that everybody deserves a decent place to live. And, and I understand the, the plight that Columbus is dealing with, with all of this trash and illegal dumping and these sites. And, uh, some of my time was actually devoted for three or four months. I have three other sites that was very popular with illegal dumping. And unfortunately, I had to take up a lot of my time to get those sites cleaned. I called in and reported several times, but without any proof of who's doing it. Uh, I actually found mail, but I was informed that unless I can get them on camera, there's nothing can be done. So. It took up a lot of my time and I wasn't able to give the time I need to these properties. And I'm also an ordained minister. And with COVID, and when it got around that I was free to do funerals in southeast Georgia and southwest Georgia, with this COVID, it took up a lot of my time to do funerals. And, and, and it, and I don't want to make no excuses, but it took a lot of my time from being able to do what I have to do here. So I paid someone to keep the grass cut and to pick up trash in that area because they would frequently throw beer bottles and trash. And for some reason, this guy wasn't doing it and I just paid him and he ran out on me. So I ended up start coming back doing it myself. And, uh, this past, the last meeting that I was supposed to attend, I spoke with Officer Ziegler and, uh, they mailed the, the, I have a dual, uh, residence. We live in Morris, Georgia, and we have a residence here. It's closer to my wife's job than you follow when we're there. And they mailed the notice to the wrong address. And I just got this notice about two weeks ago. And, uh, since I've gone in and started doing the work on the building, I've already cleaned every unit out and I, I did pictures so I could, uh, show that the work has started. I went in and started the demo process for the repairs. I was able to clean all of the buildings out, got everything cleaned out and then to secure it. The building is clean from the outside, inside is clean and remove any hazards that may have been there. And, and, and I would, uh, respectfully ask that the council would grant me an opportunity to, to see this project through. And I do have, and I've had two potential buyers. I have one contract here that was emailed to me of a guy who's already purchased five buildings in that area. I think his name is Mr. Ronnie Leon. He's already purchased buildings over there and started rehabbing it. He's interested in purchasing this building from me at any point that I decide I want to pull out on it. And I have another, uh, potential buyer, uh, Dr. Giotti, who is the, uh, owner of Heritage Property. He's also interested in the building. If I can get to a point where I don't want to continue, they would like to purchase it. So I, I don't want the unit to be demoed. That's why I didn't demo it myself. I'm licensed demo here in Columbus to do demolition. The building has potential. And, uh, I want to, you know, put the time and effort and I do have the financial means to, to rehab this building. And, uh, I've spoke with Andrea Winston out at, uh, New Horizon. She even expressed an interest that if the building meets their standard, she can use it to put some of her folks in through rehab program. A, and, and that's what my interest are in this building, is to rehab it and to, uh, take the time out to make sure this building is, is up to city standards and city code. And, and I just want to get the opportunities to, like I say, if I have to, I did bring the proposals, I did bring the costs, uh, material costs. And I did bring all of the pictures that I, where I've started the work. I brought all of that in case I need to show it. And, uh, I just want to be heard and I thank you all for giving me an opportunity to speak. And like I say, it would be my, uh, wish that you would grant me the opportunity to finish this project.
For, for how lo, how much time, Mr. General? I mean, we, I, I don't think the council's going to just give you an unlimited amount of time.
There is four units and I, and I, and from looking at it, it would take about forty-five days per unit because I stripped everything out of it. I, I, I stripped it all the way back down to the studs. Because I didn't want, uh, first, I know there's a lot of smoke damage there. And most of the walls had already been bust out in places where they was taking the copper out of every outlet. And rather than try to patch that and give a patched up looking job, I'd rather just start it over and just do it new.
Well, Mr. General, I, I understand. I, I know you've been ill too and had a lot going on. A lot of folks have with this pandemic. Um, but I, and I'm not trying to speak for council, but typically council is also very keenly aware of the fact that for two years, the neighbors in this, as you pointed out, it's a very poor part of town. They've had to live next door to this for, for two years. And that, that weighs on council's mind as they make a determination. So in the past, I know that council has allowed on occasion, uh, somebody a specific amount of time, typically not a lot. But they had to provide, they did have exactly what you said. They had to prove that, that the resources were available, that you did have a general contractor that could over, that could pull the permits and do what you need to do and that you have regular checks of it. The danger in that is, is we've had folks that try to take an opportunity to fix it up. They stumble into more problems. They've invested more money in it and then it comes down. So I, I, I just, we got a couple of counselors that want to make a comment, but I just, I just want to kind of let you know what I have observed council being willing to do and what they require if they are willing to do it. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, I have a question for Ryan. Um, Ryan, have you seen progress being made on this property?
Um, so Mr. General has kept up the property as far as the grass and keeping it clean, which is more than some of our other property owners have done. But we have not seen any significant progress on the structure itself. And we started this case under the previous owner in December of twenty nineteen. And the first conversations we had with Min, Mr. General were in the fall of twenty twenty. Um, so we've been coming up on about two years with it under his ownership.
My, my suggestion would be to just, um, work out arrangements like we have in the past and if there's progress being made, but I still think we need to keep it on the list.
Okay, Counselor Garrett?
Mr. General, uh, as, as Counselor Crabbe and the mayor said, uh, this is something we have been consistent about. With people who have hundreds of millions of dollars to rehab their properties, we have said it has to stay on the list. But I promise you that Director Pruitt is very nice to work with. And I know many people who we've voted for the demo list. And if they show him consistent progress, it has to be consistent progress, forward progress. We have a lot of homes to demolish. So your home's not going to be the first on the list, but we can't stray from the standard because we've had so many people have asked us for extensions. And as far as I can remember, the, this entire, at least the last twelve months, we have not granted any time extensions. We've just said, work with Ryan administratively, administratively. But if you show him progress, he does work with people. So if you do what you're planning on doing, it's still going to be on the demolition list. So if the progress isn't made, we can't help you on that. But if you show progress, he certainly doesn't want to demolish something that you're actually trying to rehab. But you've got to show progress month after month. It can't, there can't be any delays. But, uh, just communicate all of your progress to Director Pruitt and that is the best way you can handle it. I mean, we just, we simply have not granted any extensions across the board i- as far, in the last meetings I've remembered.
Well, I, I, I've done, the progress that was made is, is on the inside. I haven't done any outside work yet because it's structural. And I didn't want to be in violation without having a, a, a GC's, uh, pull a permit.
Sure.
But at the last meeting, I spoke with them and they, and I don't think it was, may have been you. I, I think there was something laid at the front as well. I even asked her, you know, what could I go ahead on and clean without the permits? And she did tell me, I told her that there was a lot of stuff that was left. And so as a matter of fact, this week alone, I've hauled about nine and a half tons of debris to the landfill.
Well, and that's, that is great news for, you know, Director Pruitt to know about. Just keep emailing him about your progress, whether it's exterior, interior. And I, I mean, I promise you, he doesn't, we've got plenty of properties that need demolishing. If we can get one off the list that you're going to fix yourself, we certainly want that. But today, we, i- it's just, this is the tradition of council that we have to include everything on the demo list and go ahead and approve it. But he, he has traditionally worked with people who are willing to fix up the properties. I just want you to know that.
But the, 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 the main thing though, that I want you to make sure you take away is if, barring a recommendation from council, it stays on the demo list. There'll be second reading coming up in two weeks. And at that time, if the ordinance is passed, it'll be queued up for demolition. So I know if, if you do talk to Mr. Pruitt, you make, make sure you, you guys, and I know he'll put it in writing, what the expectations are. Because my biggest fear is people have great intentions, they get in there and they start putting some money into it and then something goes sideways and you don't meet the deadline and it comes down and you have put more money into it. So just, a- and, and I'm not, I don't mean to be preaching to you, you're the pastor. But, but I would, I would communicate with Mr. Pruitt, make sure you have a plan, the one that's agreed upon by the city. Uh, and just understand that the process is going to keep moving.
Yes, as I say, I considered all of that and I looked in, I weighed those options. And, uh, you know, I had the opportunity to, to actually just make the sale.
Right.
On the property. But, you know, I considered and I looked at everything, spoke, you know, talked it over with my wife about all of the financial stuff that we go through. And, um, and that, we decided to go ahead on and go with it. And actually, one of the reasons I decided to go along with it, to keep it for myself as a residual income eventually, is that my wife, a couple of weeks ago, was diagnosed with, uh, degenerative, uh, dys disorder. And, uh, and that's probably going to force her into an early retirement. And so considering that, you know, I decided I, I'd best just go ahead on and, and just try to, you know, get this property up to date. And, 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 and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Pruitt, they have been very patient with me and working with it. They have worked with me. And if I, I think I've met with them twice. And they have been very, very, understand, very patient with me on this. And, uh, but I, I, I am a dedicated worker and I do want to put this time and effort into getting this done.
I understand. And I, uh, we've got a couple more counselors. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. One thing, uh, you know, one of the reasons, one of our concerns is how it affects the neighbors having to look at this. And so I would recommend, I mean, I understand you working on the inside, but that doesn't affect the neighbors as much as looking at this every day. And so I would encourage you to work on the exterior first. Get that looking better for your neighbor's sake. And then start working on the inside. That's just my recommendation. Just because from what we talk about and, um, the reason why we have these demo lists is because it makes the neighborhood look awful. And so please consider, uh, consider that and work on the exterior first.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Huff?
Uh, Mr. General?
Yes, sir.
You say you have four units?
There's four two-bedroom units in that building.
Okay. Uh, get with Mr. Pruitt, uh, Director Pruitt and, uh, let me ask Director Pruitt, what's, what's a timeline for? If he's working on the exterior first, what's the timeline as far as him completing each one as far as what you need?
Well, as Counselor Crabbe mentioned, we're mainly concerned with the exterior, you know, condition and the, to qualify for the demolition list, the cost of repair, it has to be fifty percent or greater than the property value um, or the value of the structure. So if the repairs were made to the outside with the roof fixed, you know, all of that complete, you know, it would be off the list even if the carpet paint wasn't done on the inside because it would be under that fifty percent value. So that's really what we would be looking for and I can meet with Mr. General and come up with a plan and define specific dates. But we'd be looking for, you know, immediately getting those permits and, you know, pretty much getting, getting started on the roof and the exterior right away.
Okay. Well, Mr. General, that's what, that's what I'm looking for. Get with Director Pruitt and he just laid it out. If you can get the exterior repaired like Counselor Crabbe was talking about.
Yes.
So it looks good to the neighbors.
One of the reasons I started the inside, there was so much stuff in there the contractor couldn't get in to do an assessment.
Yeah.
And so that's why I had to come in and get all that stuff out of there.
Yeah.
Because when the fire happened, all of the belongings that the people had was still there in the home. And so I had to get this stuff out so that he could actually go in.
Well, you, you've done a great job. But in order to keep your property at this point, make sure you work out something to get the exterior done in a timely fashion.
Yes, sir.
And that will give you the time you need to repair the inside.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. General, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right. Thanks, sir. Moving on to number three on the list. Nine twenty Diggs Avenue, Walter Bland, owner. Anybody present? Thirty twenty-five Bonanza Drive, Peter Wheeler, owner. I don't see anybody. Twenty-three seventeen Forsyth Street. This is Jerick Wiz Cheney, owner. Twenty fifty-nine Mason Street, Garnet Funds Group LLC. Is anybody present? Next. Twenty-four ten Shaw Street, T. Marie Enterprises, owner. Sixty thirty-five Mill Branch Road, John Moore, owner. Don't see anybody. Ten sixty-five Martin Luther King Boulevard, William Mott, owner. And the last one is fifteen thirty Hunt Avenue, Gerald Miley, owner. And that covers the list. Mayor, any questions?
Doesn't appear to be any. Mr. Pruitt, thank you.
All right. Stand by, Mr. Pruitt. Move on to the next item on our agenda. This is the first.
Okay, okay.
After.
We're good. Go ahead.
The ordinance, uh, proposed for amendment is, this is Article seven of Chapter thirteen dealing with junk motorized vehicles. Uh, this revises a complete section in that article. with junk motorized vehicles. This revises a complete section in that article. Mr. Pruitt, you want to go through a couple of the high points, and we'll see if there are any questions.
Yes, thank you. I have a real brief presentation highlighting the two major changes that we're proposing as part of this ordinance. The first change is to actually change the definition of what a junk vehicle is. So currently, in order to be a junk vehicle, you have to have two of these conditions. You have to have an expired tag or missing tag, flat tires, no longer operational, all these things you see listed here. You have to have two currently under our current ordinance. The proposal is to change that to one, so if you have any one of these conditions, it would be considered a junk vehicle. And that's proposed because right now we see cars that literally will sit for years and years and years. All the people have to do is air up the tires to bring them into compliance. We, we can never catch the people at home, so we can't ever prove or disprove that the car can run, but it's been there for 10 years. The tires go flat, we go out, leave a warning, they air up the tires. Now they're in compliance with our current ordinance. So this would change that to allow us to more effectively enforce what actually is a junk vehicle. The second change is establishing a process to allow the city to remove junk vehicles from private property, similar to the processes we have for weeds and solid wastes. Basically, what we'd have to do is put a notice on the junk vehicle, as well as send a certified letter to the property owner, give them a 30 days' notice that they need to fix this. Once all that's come back, if the vehicle's still there, we actually have to go get an abatement order signed by a recorder's court judge. They review everything, make sure that everything's in line, then they would sign that order, which would allow us to contract with a towing company to go remove that vehicle from private property. So it's a, it's a good change, and this pictures properties that we're trying to clean up. So this is one of our houses that's been a problem forever. Again, we can never catch the people at home, they're, they know we're looking for them, so they, they make themselves unavailable. So this, these changes would allow us to place stickers on all these vehicles, give them 30 days to bring them into compliance, and if they fail to do that, we could tow them and, and remove them. So that's the, the highlights of the ordinance.
We do have one question. Council House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I thought at one point we were concerned that the state wouldn't let us drag vehicles off private property. Sounds like we resolved that issue. Is that right?
Yes, and, and we've worked with the city attorney's office to review this and make sure everything was, was fine. I don't know if the city attorney has any comments.
Well, notice and the opportunity to be heard doesn't go on forever, so we, you can meet due process by giving notice and advertising if you have to, and get the owner notices at the last non-address. And then we've got specific police power measures here. These things endanger public safety and welfare, and you can take this action. You've got the power to remove it. Now, there is still some due process where they have some time to come retrieve their vehicle, but if they don't, then it can be sold, and the city manager has a part in that. So.
I think it's great. So I'm, I sorted this out. Thank you.
Okay, and, uh...
And I think a couple of other communities, where was this based on? A couple of other communities have done something similar, so we're...
All right, Madam Clerk, I think she has a statement for Council Barnes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Council Barnes, he just wanted to commend Director Pruitt on the work on this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Yeah, Council Barnes has been a driving force for trying, trying to get something done with us for a long time. He, so, that's very good. All right, no other questions?
Thank you.
Oh, you do have to this? Okay.
Director Pruitt, a couple of council meetings, I'm sorry, a couple of council meetings ago, one of the, one of the buildings that you brought to our attention was on Ninth Street and I think about Fifth Avenue, and we had talked about having that boarded up or somehow or another, do whatever needs to be done to keep that people from being able to go in there. I've driven by there several times, and it doesn't look to me like it's been boarded up. I'm real concerned about our liability. So do you, I, I'm, you're shaking your head. I assume you know which one I'm talking about?
Yes, six...
Is it Eighth Street?
608th Street. They actually demolished it Saturday.
Yeah, they started it.
So it's down now.
Okay. Good work. Thank you.
Okay, and then last comment on the junk vehicle ordinance. There are graduated fines that increase, starting from $500 all the way up to $1,000 for a third and subsequent offense within a 30-day period. But we'll bring this back for a vote in two weeks. And Mr. Pruitt, appreciate all your work on that with Ms. Scheftall also in our office. Mayor, that's all we had listed tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager, we'll go to your agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I've got a street acceptance on Thoreau Court.
Motion and a second to approve Thoreau Court. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it, and councilors, when it's on your screen, you can register your votes, please. And Council Barnes votes affirmatively, so that's, that passes.
I've got Georgia statewide after-school network boost grants.
All right, there's a motion, a second to approve the boost grant. Any discussion? All right, please queue it, and Mr. City Manager, if you'd go ahead and read through what that is, and councilors, you can register your votes.
Yeah, and this is to apply for a second year of funding. It's approximately $38,198. It provides additional opportunities to provide expanded and improved support for all students in the summer program that's run by the city.
Okay, and it passes.
I've got U.S. Department of Justice, Edward Byrne.
All right, there's a motion, second for item three, and I, I'll beg forgiveness because we had been asked last meeting to read these prior to the time the votes are cast. So we'll hold that motion in a second, and if you would, please read through what that item is.
Yeah, and this is an application, it's an annual application, and, you know, we used to, used to make available more than $74,900, but it's down to $74,900. At this time, a portion of the $74,900 will go to the various public safety agencies. Fire EMS is getting a portion, MCP, the sheriff, and police, and Homeland Security, all getting a piece of this $74,900. And so that's what...
Okay, if you would, please queue the screen, and councilors, you can vote on that, please. Council Barnes votes yes, so that's, that's approved.
I've got a State Criminal Alien Assistance Program grant. It's $58,300, and...
Motion, second to approve the Alien Assistance Program grant applications. We'll hold that. Mr. City Manager, if you'd finish reading what that item is.
Yeah, but it's $58,300, and it's for the sheriff's office. They're eligible to receive these funds. There's no local match, but it's a State Criminal Alien Assistance Program grant.
Okay, please queue it. Bruce, and councilors, you can register your votes. Council Barnes votes affirmatively. So that too passes.
Got lot clearing and solid waste removal.
Item eight revealed, second.
All right, motion to approve items A through F of the purchases. Is there any one that someone's pulled? All right, we'll hold that. Mr. City Manager, if you would run through the purchases.
Again, we have a primary and secondary for lot clearing and solid waste removal when we have to go out to these sites, and you saw some examples, I believe, of some sites today. Then we've got roofing services at a Metro Lower Maintenance Shop. It's $319,700. Of course, you know, that's federal funds pay a portion of that. I've got the vending machine services, and it is to provide snack and drink vending machine services for various city locations. I've got real estate appraisal services. You know, we go out, we're going to purchase property or sell property from time to time. We have that property appraised. And option one is community reinvestment is with Norris Appraisal Group, and, and then option two is Norris Appraisal. And, but there is a secondary vendor, and it's on an as-needed basis. E, it's tasers for the Muskogee County Prison, $72,400, excuse me, $72,000 for tasers for Muskogee County Prison. Item L is an amendment for construction managers, general contractor services for the government center complex. And of course, you all know that we are, so we're asking you to authorize execution of an Amendment Three with Gilbane Building Company in association with Freeman Associates, Inc. It's $19.2 million. Combined with Amendment Two, the guaranteed maximum for this Anova's Bank Office Complex is $23.5. That's a guaranteed maximum. And additionally, asking for authorization to execute any additional amendments, not to exceed the remaining funding available in the bond issue. Now, you know the bond issue was for $25 million, and so we've got a guaranteed maximum of $23,500. And so additionally, we're asking if there are any additional amendments that we would not exceed the $25 million that you approved in bonds, and we're asking your approval. Those are the purchases.
All right, thank you. Bruce, can you queue it for all of them? And councilors, remember, this is for all the purchases. Register your votes, please. All right, and Council Barnes votes yes. So the purchases are approved. Council Crab is your button. Is you still, so Council, yeah, Council Crab's voted as registered as yet.
So, Mr. Mayor, you already pulled up the compensation pay plan, but let me tell you, I, I've got actually a slide or, that I want staff to put on the screen. You know, it's good news in that, you know, each year in June, Wallet Hub have done the best-run cities in America. And, and we are listed as number 26 of 150 best-run cities in America. We, and I'm proud of this. Last year, we were number 28. Two years ago, we were the 17th best-run city in America, so we're slipping a little bit. We slipped to 28, and now we're back to 26. And so all of those watching by television, Google Wallet Hub, W-A-L-L-E-T-H-U-B, best-run cities in America. Wallet Hub. So this was released on January 20, excuse me, June 21, 2022, last month, that we're the 26th, we're ranked 26th in the best-run cities in America. Now, as he scrolls this list, you will note that there's not another city in the state of Georgia on the list, but Columbus is number 26. I wanted to take the opportunity to make sure that you know about this ranking. Something I'm proud of, and, and I'm, I, I wish the other cities, I think Atlanta may be way down...
I think Atlanta is on there.
140-something, but I think it's the only other, 125. The two columns at the top.
That's part of the matrix they use, and they also have an explanation in there of how they arrived at this.
That's, that's why I'm suggesting that people go and Google Wallet Hub, best-run cities in America, and it gives you all of the specifics and all of the details about how, what they look at and how they rank you. And so if, if you would scroll back to the top, and it, it, it mentions a lot about leadership, too, that, I can't read that, I don't have my glasses on, but it commends leadership. And it, and it says, you know, the past, this past year has been a true test of the effectiveness of local leadership. City leaders have had to facilitate the transition from the worst of the COVID-19 pandemic back to a, a state much closer to normal, including loosening restrictions and distributing the vaccine. That's the most I'm going to try and read without my glasses, you know, but, but congratulations.
Council deserves a lot of credit for the way they helped to navigate through some of that.
And, but I did not want the night to pass without mentioning this and sharing it with you and the citizens of Columbus. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
That's ending on a high note. We appreciate it. All right, any questions from the city manager before we move on to the clerk? All right.
Mayor, let me, let me just, one other thing, and I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Goodwin to, got two slides, I believe, and it relates to the Animal Care Control Center. You know, weekly, you know, we hear from, you hear from Citizens Weekly, and we hear from you weekly about what's going on and not going on at the Animal Care Control Center. And, you know, we spend the effort to go through and prove staff and prove the facility innocence, because it appears someone has decided that we're guilty of something, like euthanizing animals, when we've not euthanized any animals. And, and so, you know, we had an RFP that we put on pause, if you will.
Pause.
Yeah, P-A-W-S. And because they had a transition in leadership. Well, they do have new leadership, and staff have checked with the new leadership to see if they are ready to move forward with the transition of the Animal Care Control Center from the city to pause, and they've indicated that they are ready. And so Deputy City Manager Goodwin has a timeline. We're ready. You know, staff have been challenged with a lot of things and ha, and ha, and have had to defend themselves and the facility. And, and I think it's about time that we move the Animal Care Control operations to pause and let them do what they think they can do. And so Deputy City Manager Goodwin has a timeline, a status and transition for making that happen.
Thank you. And with that, what the city manager has indicated, we came to you back in December and told you about what he has just stated, their change in leadership, and the fact that we did put the contract on pause at that time. We are now in the process, because they have indicated an interest in moving forward, we're going to be negotiating further the contract with them. And so we will do, starting now through August the 8th, we will be working on some of the items that are still in negotiations, and of course, dealing with facility, equipment... And of course, dealing with facility, equipment, cost, those kinds of things. And so again, now through August eighth, we will do that. We will come back to you on August the ninth with an update on those negotiation efforts. After that, on August the thirtieth, we will bring forward a recommendation to you, hoping for a vote on moving forward and delivering this contract and this operation to pause. We will look forward to September the first through the end of the year with the transition plan, helping them kind of going through what they need to, to get everything, to learn everything about the operations. And then, of course, January one of twenty-twenty-three, we hope to deliver it to them on a silver platter, letting them know that it is theirs.
Mister, Mister Mayor Protem.
Just wanted to ask generally, are we looking at total animal control? Or is this separated out by dogs and cats? Or is this everything?
Everything. They would get everything and have full control so that if any complaints or issues come on, it's theirs.
I think I asked this question before now. There are more animals in Columbus, Georgia than just dogs and cats.
That's right.
And what we hear are about dogs and cats. So I just want to make sure they understand what they're asking for.
And in the negotiation, we'll make that clear.
Yeah.
We'll make it clear.
The wild hogs and, you know, all of those things. We'll make sure that they understand.
Counselor Garrett.
To start this process, I know this is going to be a long-term process. Obviously, it's going to take a little bit of time. But I know Tricia Montgomery is extremely qualified because I was on the pause executive board when we were discussing this process, has applied for the position. Is only listed for fifty-five thousand dollars. That is well below the stress level, the general pay, pay grades that are paid for that position. And I know administratively, y'all have the ability to address this issue. She has made, I told her to go and make an application. But she would probably be the person who would go ahead and be taking over with pause if this were to work out. But we really need to address that until this contract or until this takeover could take place, that the salary is not appropriate for the position. I mean, we know that with our current Animal Control Director and with you, with Director Short. Y'all see the ugly emails that John House and I have to forward to you, and that is a very stressful position. And fifty-five thousand dollars is not an appropriate salary for that position. So I would respectfully request that that be reevaluated. Because if nothing else, we could get a director in and we could actually have them start, start that process. Tricia would be a great transition since she came from pause. But fifty-five thousand is not going to attract candidates that are willing to take all the stress because, as I said in my emails with y'all, there are always two sides to every pancake. And I know that the people that we hear from who complain are also the same people who will, you know, there are also people out there who have legitimate reasons. Like the week that y'all emailed me, when we had thirty-one intakes on Monday, ten on a, or eleven on a Tuesday, thirty-two on a Wednesday, all before July fourth. And there was no way, no possible way, we could maintain no kill. And y'all somehow did do it that week, but those numbers are unfathomable. And and I mean, I will say this for the public record because a lot of people have reached out to me about no kill. Unless people want to give unlimited funds to our animal control and not to public safety, that's just simply not much of a possibility. We do the best we can and our administration has done the best they can. But we have limited space. And right now, I think if, if the position salary is raised to an appropriate level, we can at least get somebody in here that can communicate, be transparent with the volunteers, and try and get more volunteers engaged. But, you know, I certainly understand the concerns we've discussed. But the listed salary for that position just is not in line with other positions. I've worked at another cities.
Well, let me just say, counselor, that timeline tells us that after August, September first to September, excuse me, through December thirty-first, we are in transition. You know, we are not going to hire someone and then sign an agreement or get an approval from you in thirty days. So we're going to keep doing what we've been doing. And I think, and I'll pause to commend staff. Katrina, Drell, and the other staff, the team out there have done an awesome job. And and I think there have been allegations made, there have been social media posts, and every single time, we've proven that those were false allegations related to Katrina, Drell, and the team. And so we are going to enter a process where we are going to ask you for a vote. We anticipate asking you for a vote on August thirtieth. And between September one and December thirty-one, they should be trying to hire their own person. And they can hire whoever they want, but we will not be hiring them. And we are going to move this over to them because obviously, people think they will do a better job. And we will see. Because, and and just be clear, once we make this transfer over to them come January one, twenty-twenty-three, we won't be worrying about social media posts. And we will not be chasing allegations that are made about euthanizing animals. And when there's an issue, they should not be calling us. Or the social media post should not be directed at the city. They should be directed at pause. And we're going to, we're going to support them in any way we can, but it's going to be theirs.
Well, I certainly hope you're right. I don't have a lot of hope that you are. We're going to still get the calls. Counselor Garrett.
I, I do want to bring, I, I do, I do want, yeah, the waterworks. I've, you know, many people are emailing us about that, and we're saying we can't do anything about that. But I do want to bring up Counselor House is aware of this, too. But he was dealing with medical issues he had to deal with, with his wife. And, you know, so I tried to take the lead on this, but not all the allegations are false. I have talked to the person, a, there was a physician's assistant who came at, he was supposed to be, be there to pick up the animal adopted before five P M. And they were supposed to wait until five P M. to put the animal down, and the animal was euthanized. I did confirm that was factual. I confirmed that, that the P A. did get there before five P M. And they put the animal down at four-thirty, and he got there shortly thereafter. So most of the allegations, I will admit, are exaggerated. Many of them are false. And I've addressed that with the volunteers who have posted that because it's not fair to y'all and it's not fair to the administration. But as I said, there are always two sides to a pancake, and there's always two different sides. And there are independent witnesses who work for, work for Animal Control who have reported retaliation against volunteers to me. And I will not reveal names, but I will tell you that there are witnesses who have said things about retaliation against, against volunteers, and they were witnesses in the room with them. And they've, they've reported. And I will say ninety percent of the allegations have been exaggerated and false. But the ten percent we looked into, there have been some that have had seeds of truth. And when I say seeds of truth, there still could be exaggeration there. But what's important is that there have been some ongoing issues and there have been independent witnesses who have verified some of these situations. And it's, it is something we've just got to, you know, hopefully this will solve the issue and we stop getting the calls. But I just want to be clear that not all the allegations.
We're not going to, you know, because it would take too long to go through the, the, the long list of, of some of the calls and some of the emails. And it makes it difficult, I think, for staff to get the job done. And that's one good thing about this, is that from a city standpoint, with limited staff, limited resources, we can't do the fundraising that an independent organization can. I wasn't wild about the privatization because I'm really concerned about whether or not the organization coming in, whatever that organization is, has enough information or ability to, to, to run it. And my, my fear is that if they can't, it's going to end up right back with us and we may have a healthy capital investment just to get ramped back up to be able to use it. So Counselor House.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there going to be an issue with the ACOs and any type of legal process with those since they're, or not?
Those are things that we're still having to work through. And they have to determine those that they want to, to bring on. And so that's going to be.
And I will say that obviously, we have enough jobs in the city that we can place our people.
Well, now, what do you mean by placing people? Because I know you're right. I just mean with the, the legal requirement to enforce animal cruelty laws or whatever it is.
I see.
Is there, are we going to still have to keep a piece because of that requirement?
I hope that we're able to turn the key over.
Okay. They've been working.
We're done.
With city attorney and police department trying to get that done.
So that, that's my hope. So, so.
Thank you. We got a few other councilors. Counselor Davis.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, let me just say, first of all, three things. First of all, when it comes to turning the key over and, and what this conversation is about, I, I just don't personally, I just don't want to see a contract, okay? I want to see the method of management. I want to understand how this transition or how this whole effort is going to be managed. And, and I say that in line with, I have doubts and I have concerns. And somebody's going to have to show me and give me the confidence that some of these services, Counsel Allen kind of alluded to it, I've talked about it many times up here. I'm not talking about the, the animal aspect of the dogs and cats and things. I'm talking about the many services. Animal Control is a very complex organization. They do a lot of things. But you're going to have to show me, before I sign off on a contract with anybody, that the services outside for the citizens, that they can rest assure that that management piece is in place and they're going to be provided the appropriate services just as we have. Because I think some of our people have done, the cities, our, our city people in that department has done a great job in many, many areas, not just the ones that's always being projected through social media or concerns, which they're valid, but the, the, the most vocal concerns. There are a lot of things Animal Control does that nobody ever sees. And that's the part that I want to make sure that the citizens are sure. Because when they start calling me and every other member up here on this council, what happened that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, the, the, the streets are littered with dead animals, wild animals, and they're not being picked up in a timely manner. You know, I need to be able to communicate that and be able to provide an understanding to citizens of what used to be and why it's not happening anymore. I, I mean, those are the assurances and the confidence that I need before a turnkey, before you turn the key over, you sign a contract. We need to know that those things are going to be provided with conditions and an understanding of those conditions that are, that, that are part of the management agreement. Because when, what I hear you telling us, they're in full confidence that they're going to be able to handle this and make sure that they're still meeting the level of service that we are today. And, and, and I would be thoroughly pleased if it's even above and beyond. But we need to know that. We need to know that. The, the second thing in, in this conversation is that, just let me just say that anytime it comes to hiring practices, I think we'd always consult with H R. and the executive management and let them determine what the appropriate hiring practices are to be in the city. We've always done that. There's guidelines, there's ethics, there's a lot of things that go along with that. So I want to make sure that that's clear on the table throughout this conversation.
Very clear.
Yes.
For me.
Yep. And there will be S L As that they have to meet or they will be in violation of the contract.
That's right.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of thoughts I would like to get you to consider. The one thing that concerns, Mayor, one of the things that concerned me is we're not contracting with a business. We're contracting with a board. And so it's a fluid entity, if you will. They, they rotate in and out. I'm not even sure how their, how their board members are selected or who it is. So there's not a person, I mean, that's one thing I'd like to know is who will be responsible. Will we have one-year agreements that would roll over or how's that going to work? The, the other thing is, is there a way to make this agreement easy for us to take this back? If for some reason, they, they fall, fall short of meeting our criteria? I mean, that's what I would like you to think about.
Yeah, and we certainly will. You know, I, I liken it to the agreement we had on the Aquatic Center with the private provider. They failed and we had to step in and take it back. And, and so they'll have their shot. You know, it looks easy.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, it's easy to get on social media. It's easy to call the counselor. Of course, they'll still be calling you, they just won't be calling me.
Right. I'm calling you.
Counselor Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, the two areas that I get the most telephone calls about is animal control and garbage pickup, limbs, limbs, all of that kind of stuff. And I don't want this to turn into what I think is a fiasco with our garbage servers right now. For us to have limbs sitting on the side of the road for five and six weeks that I have timed myself. I don't, I don't want this to fall into that category. And I do think that the mayor has a really valid point. And if it starts to fall into that category and we have to take it back, what is that going to mean for us financially? What is that going to mean for us with employees and, you know, all the other aspects? So I would say to you, I am, I'm very hopeful that whatever comes out of this will be something that we can all live with, all of us can live with, and the folks out in the community that are adamant about our animal control program can live with and can do well. And I, I'm, I'm real concerned about those two issues. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I inadvertently cut off the Mayor Protem. Do you, okay. All right, any, any other questions or comments from council?
Well, and we've heard the concerns, Mayor, and we'll go back and pull the video and make sure we got your concerns captured and, and make sure we address your concerns.
Just one last thing on this. We do have had this week in particular, some staffing issues at the Animal Care and Control Center due to COVID. So through the end of this week, through Saturday, July the thirtieth, we are not allowing any public access into the facility. Again, just because of the staffing issues, we just don't have the staff to take on the foot traffic. And so all adoptions, intake, return to owner, all of those will be by appointment. And so the work continues, but it's going to be by appointment. Again, just through this Saturday, July the thirtieth. And then, of course, on Monday, we will then reassess where we are in terms of the staffing levels. The number that can be called, of course, is seven zero six two two five four five one two for any questions. They are, again, the hours of operation are twelve to five, Monday through Saturday. And so you can certainly give them a call. But again, the operation continues, but there are some COVID issues.
And before people goes posting on social media, the objection, it's, we didn't have a choice.
Exactly.
We don't have a choice because of COVID.
All right.
So when you get those phone calls and social media, just know that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda for sure.
No more, no more, one more thing, huh? All right, Madam Clerk, we'll move to your agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. For the Clerk's agenda, item one, this is an email correspondence from Mr. John Reeve Renfro. He's advising of a vacancy on the Planning Advisory Commission due to Mr. Raul Esteras Halos no longer being a resident. due to Mr. Raul Esteras Halos no longer being a resident.
Councillor, what's? All right, continue.
And that was it. Council would just need to declare the seat vacant.
All right, is there a motion, there's a motion to declare the seat vacant? Is there a second? All right, any discussion?
Don't we send a letter?
He'll he'll be notified.
Okay, I want to make a motion for replacement for him.
Okay, let's 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 call for the vote on this individual. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. Now you can nominate.
Yes, I want to nominate Dr. Walter Taylor for this position. And Mr. Estevas moved to Hawaii. He got a job in Hawaii. Dr. Walter Taylor. Yes, he's with the Life Center.
All right, councillor Crabbe.
And I believe that Ms. Davis was about to say what I wanted to say.
Yes, we do have two other nominees. Councillor Crabbe is nominating Christopher Phillips. And councillor House is nominating Dr. Rocky Marsh. Therefore, we will bring this back for a vote tabulation. And at that time, if any other nominees are presented, we will include those as well.
Okay.
Item number two, this is an honorary designation application from Lilian Henderson for a street signage on Ada Avenue in honor of Reverend Benjamin F. McGruder, Jr.
Motion second forward to the Board of Honor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, like sign. All right, it passes, it'll be forwarded.
Item three, this is an honorary designation as well. This is to send to the Board of Honor, yes.
Motion second forward to the Board of Honor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all.
And the application was from Tony Thornton for a street signage on Thirty Fifth Street in honor of Ronnie Duckworth, Sr.
All right, any discussion, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion second, receive the minutes. Anybody want any other pulled or edited? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? They are received.
Okay, next, we have board appointments. We have the mayor's appointments first for the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters, the seat of Akira Mueborn.
Don't have a nomination yet.
Okay. For the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees, the seat of Renee McInnany. This is the retired city employee seat.
Yep, same.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation for the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters. Ms. Matty Hall was nominated to succeed Mr. Larry Harry Underwood. And she may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Hall. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority, Mr. Herman Lewis was nominated to fill the non-expire term of the late Mr. Gary Jones.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Lewis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments, the Public Safety Advisory Commission. This is the District Three seat. Thank you, councillor Hav. Next, we have councils confirmation. This is for an organization agency nomination. And it may be confirmed for this meeting for the Historic and Architectural Review Board, the seat of Robert Anderson. The Liberty Cultural Center is nominating Reverend Curtis West to fill this unexpired term.
We need a nomination from a councillor?
I'm sorry.
Okay. No, no, I, I got that, but I, that just said that liberty, okay.
And councillor Wilson has made the. Has made the motion, who who made the second? Councillor House, thank you.
All right, motion is second to confirm Dr. West. Any opposition? All in favor, say aye. All right, all opposed? All right, he's confirmed.
Thank you. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting for the Board of Honor. We have the seat of the late Bob Hydrick. All of the members serving on this board must be former elected officials of Muskogee County. Next, we have Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters. We have two seats that are open for nominations, the seat of Rose Spencer and Sarah Ann Arcilia. For the Corporate Extension Advisory Board, the seat of Margaret Higdon is open for nominations. For the Personnel Review Board, we have two alternate member seats that are open for nominations, the seat of Darlene Small and Dr. Shanita Pettaway. For the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, we have the seat of Esther Radcliffe is open for nominations. And for the Tree Board, we have three seats that are open for nominations, the Environmental Advocacy Representative, the Educator's Seat, and the Residential Development Seat. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other business that the council needs to discuss? Yeah, we have a motion, I I got you. But we we do have a motion. Ms. Hughes, hit your light, if you don't mind.
Asking staff to step in and just make one clarification on something the consultant said.
Okay.
And I've just asked them if you will get them just one clarification. I just didn't want it to go for two weeks before we can get it corrected on the air. And it won't take but a minute. But I do want staff to say it correctly. And it it really has to do with, he talked about zone pay and he talked about longevity. And I just want some clarification, mayor. And staff is going to come around to make sure we have that clarification before public safety people or others go out and.
Right.
And so if the finance director will come and just provide that brief clarification, and then we'll reiterate it at the next meeting when we talk about it as well.
Right, so there was a slide in the presentation that listed the methodology, under the methodologies in terms of the approaches that were that are being implemented for both general government and public safety employees. So for the general government and public safety employees, for the initial implementation, it is based on the zone. Both groups of employees are zone based for initial implementation. There is a longevity aspect for public safety that is a little different than the general government employees. But I just wanted to make that clarification in terms of initial implementation. It's both, it's zone based for both groups of employees.
Okay.
And and so I've asked him to put that slide back up. Just keep going, I'll tell you.
Yeah. Here, the zone based approach, where it talks about the zone one being zero to three years for in classification, zone two, three to six years. For the initial implementation, it works the same for both general government and public safety employees.
So so basically, what one should do if they're watching this is eliminate number two, longevity.
Well, there is a longevity aspect for public safety. We just wanted to, what was not listed here, just for clarification purposes, is that the approach is zone based, not longevity based. That first word, you know, sort of sentence in the number two needs to mirror that of number one.
I think the confusion was the consultant actually stated that they were going to be zone based for general government. And they were not using zone based for the public safety, but they are for both.
But they are.
The difference is the longevity pay that is applied to public safety.
That's correct.
And and I missed it. And when staff told me about it, obviously in the back, I did not want to close the meeting out because people watched this. They were very attentive. Yeah. And so I want to go back and correct it now and not wait.
Councillor Woodson.
Ms. Holloway, based on that information, can we make sure that the consultant or yourself, who's ever going to meet with these department heads, clearly understand that? Because sometimes people will watch a council meeting to a certain portion and stop and will not, you know, go back. And like the mayor stated, there were a lot of employees here. We don't know if they're going to go look at the whole council and just go just to that portion. So could you please?
We already have. Following the consultant's presentation, the finance director met with him. And we made sure to share with him, I'll be in all the meetings with the department directors this week along with the consultant. And there to make it clear, you know, that the zones apply both to the general government and public safety.
Ms. Angelica, just to make sure, because this presentation people will get and pass on and pass on, could we please have it corrected, the wording? So that if someone picks up the presentation, you know, they're they're not like, well, it says it right here. And I say that like with the A R P., remember the misunderstanding about the March nineteenth? I mean, March first, two thousand nineteen.
And they're not going to pick this one up because we didn't give it to them. Because we didn't give it to you either. I mean, they may see it, but they won't pick it up.
Okay, well, let's make sure because, you know, somehow or another, it gets out there. So let's make sure that it's corrected. And just like councillor Tucker said, she's right. Because I'm, when I'm in a zone meeting, I like something, I take my phone and click, click. I don't have the presentation, but I, you know, at my hand, but I have a picture of it. So I just want to make sure we clarify that before it gets out to everybody.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Councillor House.
I'm good with that, just, I had a separate question. I was glad to see the warden here tonight with us all night. He didn't need anything from us, did you?
He got the tapers.
He got you what you needed, okay, thank you.
All right, there is a motion, we do have a motion and a second. Have a motion, now we have a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we adjourn.